Good evening. Tonight is the January the 10th. This is our first meeting of 2023. This is the Select Board's meeting and it is being recorded by Whitman Hansen Community Access Television. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have quite an interesting agenda tonight. We're going to go around the world and back again with a variety of subjects that we have this evening. And we're going to do it in an efficient way as well. So that is our challenge for our first meeting of 2023. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Mr. Green for the public announcements.
Nomination papers for the May 20th town election are now available at the Town Clerk's Office for the following officers. Moderator for a three-year term, two Select Board for three-year terms, assessor for a three-year term, Board of Health for a three-year term, Cemetery Commissioner for a three-year term, Planning Board for a five-year term, Hanson Housing Authority for a five-year term, two trustees of public library for three-year terms, Whitman Hansen Regional School District Committee pre-K through 12 for a three-year term, and Water Commissioner for a three-year term. Each candidate prior to obtaining blank nomination papers shall sign a statement containing his/her name and address and the town office for which he/she plans to be a candidate. The last day to obtain nomination papers is Monday, March 27, 2023, and nomination papers must be returned to the Town Clerk's Office by 5:00 PM Friday, March 31st. A minimum of 50 signatures of registered voters is necessary in order for the candidate's name to be placed on the ballot. Upcoming meetings, January 20th, I'm sorry, Select Board, January 24, 2023, Select Board, January 31, 2023.
Okay, very exciting. First up on our docket is appointments. And our agenda item is vote to appoint Eric a current Kernsheriff CPA as interim town accountant. But prior to doing that, we might want to meet Mr. Kernsheriff and perhaps ask him some questions. So I believe Mr. Kernsheriff is with us. And did you want to join us at the podium? Maybe tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Hi, well, good evening. Thanks for inviting me. So about myself, looking at a product of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District Educational System. So the Conley School in Whitman, I used to go to that school when Mrs. Conley was the principal.
Wow.
So basically, I've been professionally, I've been the, I've had like over 25 years of municipal experience. I've been the Assistant Treasurer in Brockton, the Treasurer Collector of the Town of Dennis. I've been the Finance Director in the Town of Brangie for like four years. I've audited municipalities for three years, working for audit firm, same audit firm that audited Hanson. And then in 2008, I opened up my own business. Basically focused on municipal finance and consulting CPA firm. Pretty much from, I started out with just me, but a firm has probably dealt with over like, pretty close to 100 different municipalities and engagements over the years doing like interim town accountant, interim treasurer, that type of thing. Most recently, Middleboro just had a new town accountant. That was interim town accountant there. So basically, as interim town accountant, basically just provide a town like a bridge between their old town accountant who left or whatever and a permanent town accountant. There's usually some space there that they need to, some guidance and keep it going. So that's basically kind of like the services that we provide. I have people that work for me, but in this case, in Hanson, I'll be like the main person to do it because, you know, so much fun doing it. Just like, you know, like my initial observations of Hanson, the books, you know, the books seem to be like in excellent shape. I've worked with Todd, followed him in some communities and stuff, so the books are in excellent shape. I met some really nice people today. You know, Treasurer's Office, IT, Town Clerk. In order to get set up and ready to go, I needed to get like passwords and setups. So like Steve was a big help, the Town Clerk was a big help, Gina in the office was a big help as well. Lisa and I started looking at the FY24 budget already. You know, we've got some preliminary like revenue estimates. We looked at some of the school requests, how that'll all fall into place. So we had some initial discussions on that. And yeah, and I got like the 1099s and stuff because those have to go up by January 31st. We looked at that. So yeah, for a couple hours, got a lot of stuff done today. But obviously, all that's a moot point because as a board, the other ones that appoint interim town accountant. So if you don't appoint me as town accountant, I guess I'm not going to be doing any of that stuff. So that's it. So that's, that's the way it is. But I got like a little head start. So I'd welcome like any questions that you might have.
Great. Did anybody have any questions?
How many days per week are you planning or hours per week are you planning on working for and at Hanson?
Okay, I'm going to be, one day a week, I plan on being, being here. So anywhere between like four and eight hours. And then I'm going to have remote access as well, which I have. So when I leave today, I'll come up with, I'll have my computer, I'll have access to the computers so I can be responsive to whoever needs things like via email and so forth. So you should get a response to me within 24 hours, but I'll physically be in the building every Tuesday, God willing, you know?
Any, any other questions? And again, this is for an interim town administrator, town accountant rather. And Lisa, can you address what our plans would be for long-term in terms of the town accountant?
Well, we, I did some preliminary research on salaries around the area with municipalities that I put together. We did work into the budget a salary of $95,000. And actually, I was just talking with Eric earlier about how that would fit into the budget. And our prior town accountant, Todd Hasset, did recommend that we look into hiring our own accountant.
Yes, he did.
And that may be the direction we'll be going in.
Yep. Okay. And I think, you know, I really appreciate, you know, that you've hit the ground running. I think that's amazing. And especially since you didn't know if we were going to vote for you or not, but...
Oh, yeah. No, you know, I like, it's a good experience anyway. It wouldn't be for not because it was good getting...
But I'm hoping that you can share as you, you know, if we do move forward with appointing you as the interim town accountant, that you will be open to sharing with Lisa things that we should probably look for in addition to Todd's feedback. We'd really welcome your feedback.
Absolutely. Because the advantage to do what I do, like if you're a town accountant at town, you might close books like once a year, but if you're doing like, you know, 40 towns a year, you've closed book 40 times, you did, so you get a chance to look at different things and be aware of different issues. And I'm absolutely going to share that knowledge, you know, with Lisa or whoever, you know, what works, what doesn't, what the big issues are. So absolutely. Because obviously, you know, just like all you guys, you take pride in your work so you make sure, do whatever you can to do it, do it really well, so.
Okay, that's awesome. Mr. Weeks?
Yeah, so thank you for stepping up and doing this. I appreciate it. I guess for me, hopefully, we find somebody by this time, but you know, we're coming into our annual town meeting in May. We've tried to do our best to try to minimize, we've been lucky so far, we haven't had to raise taxes to really fund anything, but as a, I mean, that's, that's going to come to an end at some point.
Right.
Whether it be May or next May or whatever.
Right.
What's your experience kind of hitting the ground running, learning, you know, a budget, being able to kind of jump right in and help prep us for something like that? We're really trying to make as minimal of a, of an impact on people's households right now as possible.
Okay, so I'm glad you mentioned that because, you know, by looking at your budget right now, with the 2.5% increase right now, probably about like $600,000, if you have new growth, like $300,000. So you're looking at like $900,000 new revenue for next year for FY24. So that is going to be like a 2.5% increase on everybody's taxes. I'm not sure if there's any debt exclusions that affect that, but basically 2.5%, $900,000. The preliminary figures that we got from the schools already are asking for 1.1 million in increases right off the, right off the bat. So, so right now, that's where you stand right now. So you, I don't know if you guys are at your living limit or not as far as taxes go, but if you are at your living limit, the taxes really can't go up more than like 2.5% per year. I don't see, I absolutely do not see you not using that 2.5% like realistically, not using that 2.5% increase. So as far as like keeping taxes lower or even the same, I don't think that's realistic in the district because the schools will just eat that right up, you know?
Yeah, and I think that kind of leads into my, my next question, which is, you know, being able to work with somebody. I like working with people that are willing to kind of say the opposite of what we want to hear.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so I think, you know, how, how comfortable are you being, you know, the new guy here?
Yeah.
Potentially, saying, okay, we want to spend X amount of money on something.
Yeah.
And you're just like, guys, I get it, but you know, this isn't the direction I would take.
Well, what, yeah, I would. And you know, what I'd like to do is like, these are your decisions. If you decide to do this, it's going to have this effect on the budget. So for instance, you want to lease out a piece of equipment. So I said, all right, okay, if you vote to do, put this on the warrant, you're not going to have, it's not going to have any budgetary impact next year, but three years from now, it's a three-year lease, you're going to have a permanently $400,000 landmine in future years that you're going to have to do. So my thing is like, I don't say whether or not I would do it or wouldn't do it, but I would say if you do this, be prepared next year that you're going to have to find the funding to do that X. So if you vote yes, you're going to have the equipment that you want. And it may not affect this year's budget, but what's going to happen is you're going to pay the price later. And then it'll be your decision on what to do. But like, obviously, that's how I would do it. From a financial professional point of view, I would make sure that if you do vote to fund it, that you'd have like a funding source ahead of time in your mind. It's like, oh yeah, we're going to have extra revenue because of that, that'll cover it. That's kind of the approach that I would, I would take.
Okay.
So I don't, yeah.
That works, but you, you'd be willing to put up...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And that's why I do consulting because when I worked for towns, I gave my opinion and all my eggs were in one basket. Then it made for some like visits to the selectmen before the meeting because I said, you know, if you propose that, if somebody comes up as a finance director and says to me like, what do you think? I can't agree with that like, because I don't agree with it and that puts you in a tough spot.
Okay. Yeah, but that's what we need, that, we need that natural tension of, you know, like, don't tell us what we want to hear.
Right.
Push back and have, and question.
Yeah.
Because that's really what we need you for, right? We're not, we're not the financial experts, you know?
Right. No, absolutely. So no, you, no, absolutely, I'll give you straight down the middle, you know, because the one thing about finance, that's why we're talking about being an administrator versus like being a finance, at least finance is like more objective, like you can, you know, you can get it, it's more black and white. So that's what I like about it. Yeah, if you do X, I don't think it's a good idea because of this, blah, blah, blah. If you do do it, then you might say, well, we really need it because of whatever, but you'll, you'll get that honest. If I see you going off a cliff...
I appreciate it.
I'll let you know.
The one thing, and I like your personality, just the one thing that I'm always mindful of is what's Hanson going to look like five years, 10 years down the road, right? So if we have an interim person in here that just wants to say yes to look good, get those good references, I, you know, I want to make, you're answering this perfectly for me. As long as you're willing to say, you know, this is how it's going to affect it so that when, when a new person comes in for the long-term, not inheriting something that they had no control over.
Yeah, because your real reference is like your own credibility and character because jobs come and go, but your character is what stays with you. So like, you might lose some bad references, but if you did the right thing, that's, that's the way it goes.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Mr. Higgy?
The only thing I would add, Eric, is if I would have put you in my position, where you did all this pro bono work for us today.
Yeah.
That if we waited another two weeks until our next meeting, you know, how would you feel? No, I'm just...
No, but honestly, if, honestly, if there was some sort of thing and you said, oh, we got, there's one little loophole we have to do, like, I honestly, like, if, if I thought the loophole would be dove through or whatever, I mean, yeah, I mean...
Well, I mean, I don't want to get into it.
Don't get into him.
Yeah, I don't want to get into it, but we have council, we have town council here.
Yeah.
You're not on the payroll.
But the other thing is, I love this job so much, I would do it free, but I'm not independently wealthy, so I got to get paid. I don't stay this, I don't stay this skinny, you know? By not getting paid.
Thanks.
Oh, my word. Mrs. Green, any questions?
He's answering all the questions, right? You're very honest, though. I like what I hear.
Yeah.
I don't know that I want to follow that.
Sure.
You, you mentioned Andrea and you have her, her in here. What, what part, if any, will she play? I know she's...
Well, I'll be the face, but would she play is a perfect example. Lisa and I today, we met on the revenue, I said, she goes, you guys are going to do it like a revenue forecast. I said, this is what we did for the town of Mendon. So after Lisa left, I emailed Andrea and I said, hey, can you take this, do it for Hanson using Mendon's template? So she'll be back office, you'll be dealing directly with me, but she's support. And if, if I go down for the count for some reason, then she could come in and do it, but that's, yeah. But that, that's it.
Thank you.
Ms. Green?
I had the pleasure of sitting with Eric and we already looked preliminary at the numbers based on what the numbers were we got from the schools. And we will, I shared with him the schedule, the Select Board schedule and our budget schedule. So at the 24th meeting, we will be providing you with a budget update and a town accountant update. So Eric will join us and we will have more numbers for you. He's great to work with and I feel he's going to be a very good fit for the town.
I mean, honestly, you don't fit the prototypical...
Everybody says that. Everybody says that.
Profile, I, I mean that in a very nice, positive way.
Some people don't, but that's, it is what it is.
So we can postpone the vote till the 24th?
Take a chance, roll the dice, see what happens.
You know what? If you can be this jovial dealing with our financials, I think, you know, you've already got my vote. Did anybody else have any other questions or comments? Okay. And Ms. Green, anything further? Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to appoint Eric a Kernsheriff CPA as the interim town accountant. And I'm trying to think what period we, I guess until such time as we make a determination about a full-time town accountant.
Yeah, based on what our budget shows, where we are and whether we can go full-time, part-time. I know also, this may be for the next agenda, but just to kind of breach into it, Whitman has approached us about possibly sharing an accountant services.
Okay, so let me rephrase it. So this is a vote to appoint him as the interim until such time as a permanent town accountant is identified and hired?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Okay, great.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going from interim town accountant to a dog complaint because that's how we roll here. So we've got our ACO. I was going to call you a dog officer, but that, that is probably not, not the right term. So hate to do it to you, Joe, but do you mind stepping up, telling us who you are and laying up the facts as they are for what we're discussing tonight?
So my name's Joe Kenny, do animal control in Hanson. This issue goes to a dog complaint that was filed on the on court with a loose dog. We get a nuisance dog hearing on one of the dogs of the property. This is the other dog at the same property.
Okay, yeah.
And it got loose. It was returned to the yard before I got there. And we're here.
Okay, so it got loose and it is not the dog that we had a nuisance hearing about.
No.
And this is not a hearing, I just want to clarify, this isn't a hearing. If it was, we would have had the appropriate parties here, we would have given them the notice, et cetera, et cetera. It, it was more of a, I think, a little bit of a red flag because if one dog on the property is getting loose, then it begs the question, are all of those measures that we, they committed to taking, were those measures all put in place? And if so, how did this dog get loose? Do you have any insight on that?
So as far as like the other dog, from what I was told when I spoke to the body at the house, the other dog is still being leashed when it goes outside, which is why it hasn't been getting out.
Yep.
And in this case, there was work being done at the house and somebody left the gate open.
Okay.
But the other dog, as far as what I was told, is still being confined on a leash when it's out.
Okay. Mr. Higgy?
So we haven't had any complaints on the first dog?
No.
And this is the only time for this dog?
Yep.
And from what you just said, Joe, was they were doing some work?
Yeah.
So I...
Yeah, no, it's, to me, it's like, you know, apples and oranges in a way, like, I mean, it happens to be at the same address, but it's not the dog we had the nuisance hearing about.
And, and, right. And they're doing everything they're supposed to with the other dog.
Exactly.
And it looks like this dog just had the chance when the gate was left open, so...
And I mean, I looked at the, there was a video that was sent and I'm not an animal expert by any stretch, but I do love me some dogs and I have a lot, you know, I see them all the time and I'm dealing with them all the time. And, and it did not appear from the video that the dog was, was aggressive. It was barking like, like you would bark to protect, like, kind of like, stay away, you know, whatever. But it didn't, it wasn't snarling, gnashing of teeth, you know, I didn't hear it growling. I don't know. Did you...
Yeah, so I did see the video as well.
Yeah.
It seemed to me the dog was barking in a normal response to somebody approaching it.
Yeah.
It wasn't in its yard.
Yeah.
So that was outside of its yard. But I would say that it was a relatively normal response for the dog. It seemed to back off and keep a distance from people.
I agree.
They didn't charge anyone.
Yeah. So what do we normally, do you issue like a warning in that situation or do you have to, do you have to actually physically see the dog out of the property?
Typically, they'd get like a fine, like if I collected the dog, so if I was out there and I caught the dog, it's difficult because the dog was already back there before I got there.
Yeah.
So it's difficult. I could say like there is a video of the dog running through a yard. I don't know, I've never fined off of that, but...
No, and I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just wondering, can we just have a conversation? If you haven't already, like, you know...
So I, like I said, I did go out to the homeowner and I spoke with them about the dog being off. It was actually the son of the owner who was also an adult, but I, in these cases before, we've sent out a letter just restating the town laws on the dogs, like leash law and keep the dog in the property, just to reaffirm that and put like a formal letter out.
I think that seems appropriate. What do you guys think? I think what, where we all stand, and I think you do too, we don't want anybody getting hurt. This dog wasn't, didn't seem to be a problem, but that other little guy had some issues and we really don't want that to go south.
Correct.
And so, you know, the fact that one dog could get off that property kind of indicates maybe things aren't as locked down as they needed to be.
Well, you know, in fairness, when you have workmen in your house or whatever, you can only do so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think sending it, like sending out a letter and formally saying like, keep an eye on this. And it's a good thing for us to keep an eye on in general as well and be made aware if this stuff is happening because like you said, there is the other dog in the house.
All right, well, we appreciate that update. Did anybody have any other questions?
No questions, please.
All right, keep up the good work, Joe. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thanks for the update. Okay, we are now going to discuss the McQuan, Tipp, Abington, Rockland water pipe issue and we have got our town council here this evening to discuss this issue with us. Good evening.
Great. Good evening, Kate Federoff, Town Council. Thank you for having me. And I see Tony arrived too, who can probably speak more to the engineering issues that are going on. But, but to give you some background, are you familiar with the background or should I just give a quick summary?
I think you should. Some of us are, but not everybody is, so you probably want to lay it up.
Okay. So the town received essentially DOT funds through the TIP program to do some road reconfiguration and reconstruction on 114, so McQuan Street, okay? And in the course of investigating how it was going to be engineered, it was discovered that there was a water main running underneath in the length of the road and it was fairly high up in the road. Part of the reconstruction, which Tony would speak to a lot better than I would, they're lowering the road and changing an intersection where, where it will lower and come closer to that water main. This is a very old water main, okay? So the question DOT had was, would the construction undermine the main? And, and then the question for me was not the engineering piece, but what is the liability? How do we handle that if we have to relocate the main? Who pays for it? The main is not servicing us, it's the Rockland-Abington water line. And what we discovered was this main was created as a result of a certain act from 1885. That's how old this guy is, right? So, so there really is a risk that the infrastructure could be delicate, we'll say. And we looked to see if there was an easement agreement or something recorded at the registry which would spell out who would bear the responsibility, right? Because this is our land that the main is running through. And there's nothing apart from this special act that's recorded that specifies who is responsible for what. So then you go to the default easement rules. And essentially what those rules say is there's a servient state and a dominant estate, right? One is the property that's burdened by the easement and one is the property that is, the entity that is served by the easement, right? So, so the way it works, generally speaking, is whoever disturbs is the one who pays, right? So this main is hanging out there undisturbed for years and years and years and we are the ones who want to make the change. And so think about it this way, if you had a well on your property and your neighbor used that same well, had an easement to get water from that well, and you wanted to put a pool in or something like that, and you had to relocate that pipe that services the easement to your neighbor, you would pay for the relocation. Here, it's sort of a similar thing. Now, the difference is an easement holder, the person who benefits, the entity that benefits from the easement, also has an obligation to maintain their infrastructure, right? And clearly, because a main is dug underground, you're not inspecting it and doing those kinds of things on a routine basis. And there have been breaks along that main, you know? There have been breaks, they've had to dig up the road, they fix the road when they do that because that's their obligation because they're getting to their infrastructure. And so then you come into a legal question of, was it our construction that undermined the pipe or was it the fact that it's 100 and, someone do the math, 222...
139.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. A 139-year-old pipe that doesn't get routine maintenance just because it's buried is naturally delicate, right? And so normal wear and tear, normal maintenance of our roads would have disrupted it as well, right? And so that becomes a question for experts to answer and all of that. So the reality is there's no real clean way of doing this. We, we have spoken with the district and they're unwilling because me, I thought, well, this is a really great opportunity to say, here, you have an old pipe. Do you want to replace it while the road is open? But of course, that pipe replacement doesn't come for free, right? And they've reported to us that they don't have the funds to do such a large project at the moment. So they were unwilling to voluntarily come to the table and say, okay, while you have the street opened and dug up, we'll dig it deeper, we'll replace it with whatever they use for pipes now. And they weren't willing to do that. So we're left with the existing pipe. I think at that point, there was some sort of discussion preliminarily with DOT to say, is there a way that we can modify our plans so that the intersection in question isn't dramatically changed the way that we initially had designed it? Um, it was initially designed to be the optimal safety or whatever for the area. Is there a way we can make it a little less? And, um, I don't think there, the DOT was receptive to modifications because part of their goals are to create the most optimally safe intersection that you have. So currently then our, our next option was to say, well, by doing this construction, is there a way to determine whether or not this main would be impacted? And what DOT is saying, now that they're aware of the existence of the main and its location, is you have to do, um, a, a level one survey, I think, or?
You start with a level two.
Level two.
And then it, it'll kick you up to a level one.
Who's paying for this survey?
So it's known as a subsurface utility engineering. That's what's been brought on now by MassDOT. So they're aware, so they're doing this with all their projects. And I think it probably has to do with utilities that are in the ground. You know, there've been some utilities in the ground where utility companies haven't maintained them and have had accidents. So this subsurface utility engineering, Sue for short, is being utilized on all the projects that MassDOT is involved in. And what that requires is three tiers. Tier three is to utilize existing plans, uh, to determine the low, exact location of the utility, in this case, the water line. Tier two is to, uh, do a, uh, LiDAR, up and down, up along with the, the street to locate vertically and horizontally where the water line is. That usually kicks you up to a third one, which is test borings at certain intervals to find where this pipe is exactly and may, I say may, be able to determine its condition. Yeah, that has to be performed by a company that is certified by the state to do that work. Uh, a tier two survey is roughly about eighty thousand dollars, eighty to ninety, actually. Tier one, when you add the borings, depending on, it's going to be roughly a thousand dollars per boring. We, the environmental partners figured out that there is, I think, uh, thirty, thirty-six hundred linear feet of pipe. Even if they did twenty borings, you're still talking about another twenty thousand dollars. So you're looking at an additional cost of well over a hundred thousand dollars to this project that this town of Hanson would have to take on. Not the town of, not the Abington-Rockland, but the town of Hanson would have to take on to make the determination. And I, I inquired as to, okay, what about, is there ways to pay for that through grants? And I'm getting, no, it's, you know, this is, this is part of the, part of the deal.
Is, should environmental partners have identified that this was an issue before? Because they're the ones who helped us come up with the design and everything. I'm just wondering, I mean, we, the, these pipes didn't just suddenly pop up in that road. I, 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 I'm wondering if there's some ownership there. Um, and I, and I think highly of environmental partners and we've dealt with them on a number of projects, but it seems to me as though this was a known entity. And I'm a little disappointed that it wouldn't have been identified as a potential, um, you know, limitation on this project.
Hindsight's twenty-twenty, but, uh, sure, that's a question, that is a question I posed. But I, in their minds, they never thought that this would become the issue that it has. They felt that, you know, it's not something that would have been a deal breaker, uh, that this is something that, you know, there would be some kind of, uh, discussions between the towns and there'd be some kind of solution.
Which is fine, Tony, but they never even brought, like, this wasn't even part of the, because I remember Jim was here and I think Joe's been here for at least part of the conversation with environmental partners. This wasn't even brought up as a like, hey, footnote, by the way, this could be an issue.
Yeah, I, I can't speak for them. They would have to answer to you as far as, you know, their thoughts. I can only tell you what they told me because I asked that same question. Uh, you know, having done what I did, to me it was, okay, well, this, we know it's in the road, there's a water line here from the eighteen hundreds. Should we take a look at it, you know?
All right, so.
But, so that, like I said, hindsight's twenty-twenty. We, now we're here today.
All right, so where we're at today, has any work been done on this project?
At the moment, it's at a standstill there. What environmental partners has to do is they keep, uh, providing reports to the state regarding this process of the project. And there's also, you know, the monies that the state would kick in. So this, this in essence, this issue puts a thirteen million dollar project into jeopardy that goes on the shelf.
Okay, that was, okay, that was going to be my question. How much is the money?
And the money you've spent are.
And, and the money we've spent so far was for the engineering studies, right, through environmental partners? And, and we've got this grant money, and what is the deadline by which this work needs to be completed?
I believe it was two thousand twenty-six is the date.
Okay.
So you have, so unfortunately you have this situation where you have a twenty-five percent design and you have to, but in the, within that twenty-five percent design, you've pretty much have most of the design work done. That other seventy-five percent, we'll call it as peripheral and, uh, procedural paperwork and permitting. So the majority of the design is done, but it, it, it's a killer that this line, that there's no comp, this is no compromise. The last time we had a conversation, and I think you were involved with environmental partners, was trying to one more time approach the Abington-Rockland Water Commission. And there's even someone that works at environmental partners who, uh, has interaction with the Abington-Rockland folks that may be willing, that would be willing to also come along to try and say, hey, what can we try and do, you know? I, you know, I've even, as I've been looking at some grant stuff, you try, you know, as I'm looking for grants to say Hanson, to see if I come across anything that might be like, hey, let them know that, hey, there's a grant here that you might.
You can't blame them. I mean, they probably have different priorities they've already identified and this just isn't their priority, but, you know.
I mean, one of the, one of the phone conversations we had, I think you were involved in that, was when we spoke to them sometime last year. And there was a case of their, their water department head was heading out and retiring and a new person was coming in. You know, they look at, they consider the line as it's one inch thick steel in good condition when it, you know. But that was then. This, this is now. Who knows what condition it's actually in? So it also, you know, they look at it as like, they prioritize what their needs. And to them, that water line is not a need.
So we could, okay, so we get the thirteen million dollars plus the money we're already out of pocket on the line, which we're out of pocket anyway, but, um, but at least we were able to justify having to pay saying, well, okay, the town has to come up with this, but we're going to get thirteen million dollars in these improvements and this is going to be marvelous. So, um, now we're at a juncture where the hundred thousand is merely going to tell us what kind of shape those pipes are in. Now, if we do the borings and all of this other stuff, which is way above my pay grade because I'm not an engineer, but I kind of get the gist of what you're saying, if we do all of this, it could be that it comes back and they say, oh, you guys don't want to touch that road. The, this, this is a ticking time bomb here. These pipes are in bad shape, they're ready to go. And the minute you guys do anything, you're going to, you're going to be owning this liability.
Well, like Kate was saying, that, that's the concern. The issue, uh, is there's a crest at Crescent Street and there's a private road, dirt road off of that, at that intersection. And so there's a crest. And so the state, to make that road safer, because you have a curve and a crest, they want to lower that section of road to take that edge off, to make it a safer intersection. And so now you, what winds up happening is the road is going to get lower, so it's going to get closer to that water line. If you weren't doing that, there'd be no issue. Uh, but because that's happening, now you're going to have to interact for, I think, a distance of about two hundred feet of water line. And obviously environmental partners' concern is, once we start getting into, if you were to do plumbing at your house and you have, you're trying to put a brand new PVC pipe on a pipe that's maybe two hundred years old and that pipe just keeps breaking and breaking and it just doesn't end. And that's what their concern is. And I have, I, I've asked, I had asked the environmental partners, I'm like, look, can we talk to the state, say, how about looking at something else for this intersection, not, not lowering it, you know? Uh, it's a curve, we need to improve site distance, let's cut back vegetation, get some easements, cut back some of the vegetation to improve the site distance.
Yeah.
And, um, it, I guess they're not keen on it, but I guess it's one of those things that if this becomes such a hindrance, we may have to try and ask MassDOT. You're going to have to either put someone else's feet to the fire or turn the burners down on us because we can't, you know, this isn't going to work.
Mr. Hickey.
And it'd be, and it'd be, and it'd be a real shame to.
I have a ton of.
I can see Mr. Hickey's like.
Yeah, my brain is going to explode. Because I thought we were talking about McQuan Street and then Tony, you said Crescent.
Uh, it's McQuan Street, but when it gets to that intersection of Crescent and McQuan, that's the key.
It is a, it is a tough intersection.
That's, that's the intersection.
So you're talking from the corner of the library?
Yeah, so what, so as you're heading out towards, uh, Pembroke.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you get past the library and you're on McQuan Street and the road curves and it goes up and then there's Crescent Street on your left. And then it goes, it drops back down. That, they want to rebuild that intersection and take that hill out, so they want to lower that.
So the pipe comes from Sandy Pond down there in Pembroke that, uh?
Through, right, and it goes all the way, I believe, if I heard them correctly, all the way up to the McDonald's.
Yeah.
Or Kia, it's on Liberty Street.
So then Tony, my first question to you would be.
Yeah.
Could, couldn't we make it a one-way? Because, because I'm not, um, I mean, this is the first, I'm hearing that it's a dangerous intersection.
This is very close to Lakeside. You're, 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 you're going to create a traffic nightmare right there.
Oh, my word.
You've got Lakeside right down the street. I mean, I just think if you're trying to micromanage everybody's traffic pattern right there, you're going to create a, a storm.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out if it's.
I, I wouldn't, I've, I've been out there and it's not so much that when you're sitting on Crescent Street looking either way, that's a site.
No, it's the McQuan.
It's when you're coming, there's a, a dirt road off the other side and it's not coming to mine. That one is on the inside of the curve.
Wilkie Terrace? Is that Wilkie Terrace? Or which one is that? I know the one you're talking about, but I can assure you, yes.
Yeah, I sit low in a Camry. I cannot see coming out of Crescent. I can't see.
So when you're coming out, let's say, more, like, uh, Woodbridge, you're on the inside of the curve.
Yep.
And so it's tough to see with the crest and everything like that. And then I think they figured that as you're coming from, let's say, out towards Pembroke, as you come up over the crest, if someone's turning, is, there's difficulty. So that's what they're trying to make safer. And to make it safer, it's, it, to make it safer is they're trying to take the, lower the crest.
Okay, so again, my question would be to you, to make it safer, there must be a problem. Have, how many accidents have there been?
That's my question. How many, I don't know.
How many accidents have there been?
I don't, I don't know. I don't have that information and I don't know what they based it on.
That sounds like someone was looking for a problem solved that wasn't a problem.
So.
Other than it being a tough intersection.
And I'm not trying to micromanage any section in town, but that ends that situation at no cost except
It does.
putting up signs. Um, Kate, my question to you would be, these pipes are a hundred and thirty-nine years old, you know, um, eighteen eighty-five, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has had to have had this happen before. Where you have the DOT involved saying this is unsafe. Or, I don't know if they're saying it's unsafe. I don't know why they want to change it if there hasn't been any records of accidents or problems.
Yeah.
But the Commonwealth would have to have some kind of, you know, lawyer stuff, your stuff. Saying, you know, where, you know, uh, you know, the, 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 the town of Taunton versus the town of.
Legal precedents, like.
Right, whoever.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's got to be some type of legal first for this. Can't be less.
Yeah, I'm not saying that there aren't litigation avenues, but, and I wouldn't want to disclose this publicly.
Right.
Um.
Okay, but there might be things we could pursue.
Complicated, we'll leave it that way.
But to the point of the TIP projects, I just think it might be important because we're talking about like, oh, well, why is this dangerous? How did we end up doing this project? I, can you kind of educate us on how the TIP projects are identified, how they're prioritized, and then why we applied for this project in like three sentences or less, or maybe four?
Well, the TIP project is, you're picking a, a road to improve, whether to, uh, whether it's to widen or add sidewalks, uh, bike lanes, uh, to make it safer. For instance, this intersection, the, my guess is the reason was when they looked at the grading of this intersection, okay? There's a formula and it's usually, and it's a six-inch object in the intersection and a three and a half foot height from the road to the person's eye in the car. And if you work out that equation, you can figure out whether that crest is going to be a problem. And you, you change, and you're going to have to change that rating of that crest to make that equation work so that it's a safe, uh, intersection or crest to, to see.
Tony, let me stop you right there, and I apologize, but that crest that you're talking about in the three and a half inch distance, when the road was built, were there different standards or was it the same?
I'm going to take a get, I don't know when that road was built, but that, a lot of the roads in New England, as you know, started out as cow paths.
Yeah.
And then became, so, hey, there wasn't, the engineering may not have been as intense as it is today to figure out, and as far as safety, you know? I mean, obviously, you know, we probably grew up, most of the people in this room probably grew up in an era where we rode our bikes, we didn't wear helmets, we didn't, didn't do any of that. And today it's a whole different animal. So now as far as, uh, Madam Chair, your question, uh, much, somewhere along the line, your predecessors, my predecessors determined that McQuan Street was a, this road to benefit from Pembroke to, uh, was it Whitman, to get squared away and improved. Why, I don't know.
There was a list of priorities, you'll remember this, there was a list of priorities, the planning board weighed in, they came to the select board, environmental partners weighed in, there was a host of, of characters involved in the decision.
I know they do have a list, we do have a list in, in-house that prioritizes different streets.
And then at some point, we, and then, and then I think it was a case of we applied to the state with like maybe three different projects and that one was the one the state was like, yeah, we're bullish about that project, we'll give you money to do it. So it was not a hi, I wouldn't call it a highly scientific process. It wasn't like we, we did a study on the actual safety of each road and how many accidents and all that. It was sort of, uh, you know, the town planner had a list, environmental partners had a list, came to select board. We were like, okay, well, which ones do you guys think? And they said, oh, well, we think these and, and then the rest, yeah.
They do, I do have a list.
Pembroke did improvements on the road down there and, and then coming up towards us by the funeral home, that's been improved around there. So that's a stretch that hasn't been.
And I think that's why, because it was like, that's like the little missing chunk.
I think that's what it was, because there were three, there were three potential projects
Yes.
that were going on for like years and years and years. And I'm pretty sure because of Pembroke and the way that all the, the inroads they were making, that's why that area was chosen, so.
Mr. Hill.
So what you're talking about with the design that we have right now, they're talking about taking X amount of inches out of the road to remove the crest. Is that the only fix they have or is there like a way of like adding to either end or I'm not, I'm not in, you know, that type of? Is there another way of doing it other than removing?
You mean bring up the other parts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It becomes a whole, it's a, it's a, it's a domino effect. When you change one thing, you're changing a whole bunch of things.
No, I'm not an engineer, so I'm just wanting something.
They want to bring the road down by four feet, you know, if I sit out there, I look and go, well, I'm like, well, if we can't lower this water line, what about cutting back?
That's a big jump.
Cutting back, uh, vegetation to improve site distance without lowering the road.
Yep.
But, you know, as you say, this above my pay grade where people in, let's say, MassDOT, you're like, no, 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 that's not how we want to do things or it's not, you know, but it's, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place.
So what are you guys proposing? Like, to me, it almost seems like we've got all of these various entities, right? Making all of these decisions in a vacuum. It's like DOT saying this, Abington-Rockland Water saying this and, you know, environmental partners are saying this, we're saying so, you know, and, and it feels like, is anybody getting together? Like, is there any ability to have a conversation with every, all of the concerned parties and say, we're just trying to improve this road? Can we?
That's what we're, Kate, and that's why we're here.
Okay, great, all right.
Basically, what, what we're trying to do in, here in Town Hall and environmental partners is we want to get all the parties together in one room and try and hash something out or figure out that there, that it's not going to happen.
Well, because my other concern, Tony, is, is the.
The problem is if it doesn't happen, is a thirteen million dollar project goes puff.
I get that, but in the inter, and, and nobody, nobody hears, like, signing up for that, obviously. We, we want to get our share of state money.
But you also have a project that is, here's another hundred thousand dollars and you have to pick up the tab.
Yeah, I get that, but also I think something else to consider is the resources that we're spending. Kate, you, Lisa, you know, hours of our lives that we're not, never going to get back talking about this without moving anything forward. I, I'm honestly in a state of shock this many years later that nothing has been, you know, and I'm not, this isn't like laying blame on anybody, but it's a little shocking. I don't know why, but the glacial pace of, of town government always shocks me, um, and so.
When I, when I came on, I, you know, I didn't know anything about this project and I learned about it and then spoke, speaking with environmental partners and I had the same question. It's like, well, why is this taking so long? Let's try and get an answer. Let's try and get this figured out. Uh, you know, I've, like I've always said, I'm going to get things done.
So what do you guys need from us? Like a vote to, lay it on me? What, what are you guys looking for?
We're looking to get either assistance or, we're trying to set up a meeting. Like I said, we're trying to set up a meeting and get all the interested parties in the room and try and figure out if there's a way to solve this so that we can move forward with this project and keep it on track. If that's not going to happen, then there has to be some hard decisions made as to what is going to, uh, what are, what's the end result with the TIP? what is going to, what's the end result with the tip after that meeting? And either it's hiring Kate to do her thing as an avenue or putting the project on the shelf and saying, well, it was nice, it was fun.
Is it possible for us to work with our legislators at all? Would that help the process if we were going to have our state senator or state representative, you know, assist us in making inroads and perhaps convincing people that they're not being as flexible as they ought to be at the state level?
I think it's always helpful to have your legislative delegation assist.
Okay, so Mr. Weeks, were you going to say something?
I was supposed to say, that was going to be my recommendation. I mean, we could file a bill, the deadline to file bills is in five days, 10 days, so I mean, if we wrote something, if we got in touch with them now and said, hey, can you write us into some legislation, try to get us some extra funding, we have literally a week to do that, so obviously there's other points in time that we can do it if we really needed to, but we could formalize it.
All right, Ms. Green, can you just noodle, because I've got a couple people here who have things that they'd like to say, would you be able to orchestrate this détente that we need to have?
January 20th, the...
Well, yeah, so we need to, well, to reach out to Representative Cutler and...
And Brady.
Brady, and ask them to go to bat for us and whether they might contemplate some legislation as Mr. Weeks has indicated, and/or if they could make some phone calls to individuals that they might have relationships with to see whether they might be able to effectuate a more positive outcome for the town of Hanson.
Or find funding.
Grant funding.
And find funding, I'd like to have all of that happen, that's my wish list, it's 2023, we're going to start positively. Mrs. Capato.
I have, I'll give you the four quick questions. Does Abington have an emergency fund? Does Hanson have an emergency fund? I don't believe Hanson should be, but maybe if it came that we had to, it could be a 50-50 thing. What happens if the pipe breaks tomorrow there? And lastly, we're going to have major construction between taking the school down, putting in fields, doing something to the library and senior center. If this is not done and you have these heavy construction trucks coming up and down, is that going to make the situation worse underneath?
I...
So let me jump in really quick on two aspects. Remember, it's the water district, actually, that's the governing body here that we'd be dealing with as opposed to the towns directly. So it's the water district, and I want to be perfectly clear, they were lovely to speak to and not obstinate at all, they just had different priorities and they said, for example, if we were under construction and there were a break, they would send their crew out, no problem whatsoever to repair it. So I just want to be crystal clear with that piece. And I lost track of, I don't, I can't speak to whether or not trucks riding along the road would undermine the line or crush the line, I can't speak to that. And then I'll leave that to Tony and then...
Emergency funding, if...
Nobody was blaming on undermining the water line.
No, 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 I wasn't suggesting that, but just as a natural consequence of the weight of heavy trucks, would that weight undermine the water line? I couldn't say because I don't know the level, and I also am not an engineer.
No, I think it's just it'll be a matter of age, at some point, that water line will fail just due to age.
Yeah, and it's failed in the past.
If it breaks tomorrow or at the end of the week or something, so...
Rockland would have to fix it.
Right.
Right, I understand that, but then you have the road wide open, can't you do something then?
Well, that's the issue, we're not opening the road yet, right? And that's what DOT is saying, who's funding the project, DOT giving us the 13 million dollars, they're saying, before you open the road and then you're digging equipment and all of that stuff is coming closer to the water line than normal wear and tear, normal traffic would be, is that disruption in and of itself going to cause such a disturbance that it would undermine the water line?
What the state is saying is, this is a perfect opportunity to spend this amount of money to replace your water line while we're already there.
Right.
That way, once we're done and it's all brand-new pavement, you're not coming in a day later because there was a water line break and covering up everything that was spent.
Yeah, I get that, hold on one second, Mr. Hill. Ms. Green, I was also reminded, we, because of the redistricting, we also have Representative David DeCoste, so my apologies, I, you know, still thinking the old districting. Mr. Howard.
Yes, no, excuse me, I was involved in this from the start. I came on as selectman in 2008 and I found out, I was introduced to Old Colony Planning in Brockton by Mr. Overhauler, and I've been on that committee ever since, I'm still on it now. But I found out that for every $10,000, well, it was $100,000 of the town spent, you could get $900,000 from the state in the tip program, is that correct?
It sounds correct, sure.
In a lot of residents were asking me about sidewalk. Well, the only sidewalk we had in Hanson is what we have now, it runs from 27th to the old J J's pub, because it goes by both schools. So I said, that would be nice, a project, it's 1.2 tenths of a mile, it connects Route 58 with the sidewalk that Pembroke put in. And at the same time, I was meeting with Pembroke and Old Colony at the same time that this was all going on, and as you know now, Pembroke's is all done, all the way from the Hanson line to Route 53. So that's another thing that kind of pushed me a little bit when I saw Bob Brown and so forth, and everything was thought to be a good idea, because we have sidewalk maintenance from Route 58 to Route 53, which would make a long walk for somebody. That's why I got involved in it. And at the time, everything was fine, but the worst intersection is, is that Tony over there?
It is.
Okay, I try to recognize voice because I can't see him, but, and the worst part of that whole road was at the intersection of Crescent Street and that road across the street.
Right.
And because of the fact of the knoll there, now, we don't know if there's a knoll, what is under the knoll there. Sometimes they made knolls on these roads because there was ledge there, I don't know. But I left there in 2018 when I went on elective selectmen, and I have since, I haven't been to any meetings, I don't know if they held any. But before I left, they were going, the engineering firm was going to dig some holes and find the elevation of the water pipe sits in there.
Have they done that, Tony?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I...
Whether or not the road could be lowered or whether or not they should fill on each side of it and keep it at the same level. And because I never heard of anything about that, I never went to any meetings.
So, Mr. Howard, are you saying the Old Colony Planning Council was involved in this?
No, that's where I got the idea.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Because of the fact of you spend a million dollars, you get $10 million, I mean, $9 million worth, and...
So was it environmental partners that was going to do that additional work?
The engineering.
Yep, okay, all right.
They did the engineering. And the last meeting that I can remember, they were going to take some, dig some holes and find the elevation of the pipe, so that they could really determine whether or not they could lower the road, but lowering the road there is not that good because of the little road that goes up into, from McQuone Farm there.
Well, it sounds like that's where we're at now.
I know, that whole intersection, that's what the whole thing is.
Yep, okay, all right, thanks.
If you take a 16-inch pipe with water flowing through it, I'm sure that it would never freeze, and I don't, that's what I mean, I don't know the elevations, I don't know whether they redesigned it or what, but we did have a meeting with the town that live on McQuone Street, and they all voted to have the sidewalk on the south side, a double sidewalk, a 5'1", or bigger, instead of having a sidewalk on both sides of McQuone Street to tie in with the sidewalk that Pembroke had already put in. And, well, that's the last I know of it, but...
All right, well, that's helpful.
I don't, because we've already spent $250,000 on it, because that was a path that had to go for the engineering and design. The rest of the money will be for construction if it ever goes, so.
Okay, all right, so Mr. Hill, did you have a question?
The only thing I was, I mean, you're talking about reaching out to the senators and representatives, and it seems like the main, the one thing that would like, if possible, would be to have them help us replace the water line, not us replace the water line, but help Rockland replace the water line, so if it was replaced new lower, this wouldn't be an issue, I'm assuming.
Right, if they were going to lower the intersection, this still might be an issue because the Mass D O T may say, geez, that line is old and it should be replaced. But it becomes more of an issue because of the fact that they are lowering the road. Now, like Kate said, you know, they listen to us, we had conversations with them, but we're just trying to have everyone that's interested in the room to try and come up with a solution of, yeah, maybe the state can assist with not requiring that be done, money towards the Abington Rockland, something to, so that we could come to a compromise and say, okay, walk away happy, and we get what we want and they get something that they need.
We don't want to lose money.
No, no, but we don't want to...
Yeah, we don't want to make, we're trying not to make it adversarial, you know, and have a big rumble between them, you know, but...
I don't want it to be adversarial, but I don't want to lose the 13 million more than I don't want it to be adversarial.
Exactly, we're just trying to come to a compromise.
I'm just being honest, I mean...
Yeah, we're just trying to come to a compromise and get a solution.
Okay, so I think where we're at is we need to gather the parties, we need to build up our defenses, as it were, and make sure that we are getting the support we need from our capable state representatives and state senator, and get them together, and, you know, they also may have some folks they know in Abington Rockland that we can, you know, just kind of work cooperatively, and I hear what you're saying, Kate, that they're not being difficult, it's just like us, I'm sure they've got a capital planning matrix and they've got priorities and that just doesn't happen to be their priority right now, and just because it's ours doesn't mean it becomes theirs.
Right.
So I don't think it's an issue of they're being combative or difficult or anything like that, but we need to try to prevail upon them and see if they could revisit their priorities.
Right, so we can coordinate a meeting with environmental partners, DOT, the district, and is there someone on the board who will be our point or should we make our point, you the chair, our point person?
I'm more than glad to do it, I, you know, that's totally fine, unless somebody has a burning desire, you know, okay, all right. I was sort of hoping somebody might, might be like, no, that really...
I didn't see hands flying up.
I was hoping somebody would say, that speaks to me, I really want to do it. Okay, yeah, that's fine, I'll be the point person and obviously, Lisa, I'd like you to be part of this conversation.
Absolutely, and I just want to, so with reaching out to our legislators, what exactly are we asking for? Are we asking for money towards, for Abington Rockland?
Let's get them to the table first.
Or we want to get them to the table?
Let's get them to the table to have a conversation first.
Yeah, yeah, and...
But if we could have them earmark the $100,000 for the drilling and all of that other stuff, what are you thinking?
So money for the additional testing, but we're not looking for money for...
Mr. Weeks was the one who thought we should try to earmark something.
No, I mean, if you can legislate, you have a week to do it, I just think, you know...
Right, you don't have a lot of time. Didn't Mr. Howard indicate that the engineering firm had already said they were going to do that?
They did say they were going to do that, but that hasn't happened yet.
I see, I don't believe that's happened.
Environmental partners have already come up with something, I don't know, I don't know if they've had any meetings since I left there.
It's unclear to us, more on that later, we'll have to circle back with environmental partners on that.
Yes, yes, we will do that, and I'll circle back with you tomorrow, Lisa, too, about coordinating that piece and reaching out to the legislative delegation.
All right, well, thank you for that update.
All right, fantastic.
We appreciate it, and have your people call our people and keep it going.
Thank you for having me, all.
All right, we'll just clip off a couple of little quick little things, Stalwart Productions, unfortunately, they had, they are not filming, they canceled the filming.
Can't come on, he's on the cutting of the floor.
It's such a bummer.
Can I ask a question about that? Because when Frank came in and, I can't think of his name, Roger?
Yeah.
When they came in, they did some preparing for this.
Yes.
Which cost us payroll.
That's an excellent point.
Is there something we can recoup from this company?
I can certainly ask them.
I think that, I was thinking the same thing, because although they're not filming, I think Roger said he had cut some limbs and prepped areas and...
And I mean, even if it was two or three days' work that some of the caretakers did up there, you know, if this company's going to try this again and then, you know, maybe cancel again, you know, it's just something to...
We hate to bring up the impolite subject of remuneration, but we would like to get paid for the effort and the work that we've put in.
Although we did get a large tree cut down at their expense that was hanging over the cabin, they were worried about the tree or a branch falling under the cabin, so they hired the firm to cut the tree down.
Well, can you circle back with Roger and Frank and the rest of the staff, Dory and whoever it may concern, and figure out what type of hours we put in there and then take a look at the contract and figure out, you know, is there any proviso in there? And if not, it's food for thought for the future.
Yes, absolutely.
That we have some, something in there for preparatory work. Mr. Weeks.
We did have a contract that we signed, right? So did somebody actually do the walkthrough, like they had said that they were going to do to make sure that one of our people signed off that everything that they did was left as it was before they got there?
Well, they hadn't done any prep work as far as bringing in anything, they just basically were, they just looked, they didn't have...
They scouted.
They scouted, they hadn't actually done any work yet.
Okay.
Okay, great points. Tony, if you don't mind, just hang in with us, because I know we're going to discuss the recent MBTA community final guidelines, I wanted to discuss the building inspector changes. Ms. Green.
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the board, we recently received a determination from the licensure agency for the state regarding the status of our building inspector. He was in the process of obtaining his certifications to be for building commissioner, and unfortunately, the timeline, you know, everything did not come together with courses and testing, so he exceeded the 18th month window that they allow for obtaining the certifications. We appealed the determination and unfortunately, the state came down with a negative determination because our building inspector hadn't obtained the certifications within that 18-month period, so they denied the appeal. In that same letter, they required our building inspector to resign as building commissioner.
Now, can you clarify what Mr. Glass is still able to do in his capacity, but what that fine line of demarcation is between local inspector and building commissioner?
So the local inspector, he is able to go out and inspect any construction work being done, still able to determine and interpret the zoning laws and provide guidance to any construction going on. Building commissioner is, basically, that is just one area, which is occupancy permits. Once construction is completed, a final inspection takes place and the building commissioner signs the occupancy permit. Mr. Glass, please correct me if I'm speaking out of case on this. So basically, Mr. Glass can still be our local building inspector, he will go out and inspect any construction, look over anybody who submits a permit for any kind of a building or a construction project, he can sign the permits, he, as far as if somebody's building a new home or apartments, he just cannot sign the occupancy permit, that's the only difference, and if you want to just add to that, if there's anything I've left out?
No, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, so where we're at now is the state has asked that he resign as the building commissioner.
Yes.
And what we've got on our agenda tonight is to accept that resignation and to appoint him as a local inspector.
Yes.
And to appoint another gentleman whose name escapes me.
Joseph Stack.
Joseph Stack as the building commissioner for an interim period until such time as Mr. Glass satisfies... until such time as Mr. Glass satisfies the state requirements.
That's correct.
Okay, and Mr. Glass, you have made a representation to us that you feel confident that will be done by May?
Yes.
Okay, and you will apprise us if there should be any impediments to reaching that goal by May? Okay, did anybody have any questions for Mr. Glass? Okay?
I'll go. I'm disappointed, Carrie, that the state did not allow you to continue at your position until such time as May. You know, I mean, I'll say it vocally, because I really don't want to accept your resignation, but I will to keep you local, but I'm not happy about it. You know, and I said this publicly before, you know, you have a guy that hit the ground running, and they didn't give him extra time with, you know, the whole situation.
Even though he's shown the effort.
Exactly, so.
Hundred percent.
I disagree, you know, with what the state said, and I can't wait till May, you know, until you have everything you need so I can reappoint you to your current position that you're resigning from. That's all I wanted to say.
Any other questions, Mr. Hill?
I'd like to second everything, I agree a hundred percent. I'm going to accept the resignation, but don't want to have to.
I think we see you, we see the effort you're putting in, and we're disappointed that these are the actions we're being forced to take tonight. But you know that we have to do this, and, you know, it's hopefully a very short period of time, and we'll be back on track again. So I will entertain a motion to accept Mr. Glass's resignation as the building commissioner. That will be our first motion, and then we'll have several others after that.
Second.
All in favor? Again, with regret. The second motion will be to appoint Mr. Glass as our local inspector.
So moved.
All in favor? And the third motion will be to appoint the gentleman who I just have, Mr. Slack.
Stack.
Stack, okay.
He's the building commissioner for the town of Hanson.
Okay, Mr. Stack, as, thank you, as the alternate building commissioner for the town of Hanson interim until such time as Mr. Glass is back.
So moved.
And second.
All in favor? Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Glass. Okay, and keep us up to date, and we wish you the best of luck. Okay, all right, Mr. Frias. We are looking forward to hearing from you about the final guidelines issued for MBTA communities.
I saw the agenda this evening for the board, so to keep it simple, I know that you love my presentations.
Always.
But I'm going to keep it simple, and so what I did is I created some handouts. Pass them on to you.
Oh, we love handouts.
We have, is that different than what we already have?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is, this is going to be new information.
Thank you.
Okay.
Look at how thick they are.
Thank you, sir.
It's going to be about the MBTA stuff and also, it's going to be a little sidebar.
So I know you probably do have a letter before you dated October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and I'll just touch base on that. So on August tenth, two thousand twenty-two, the Department of Housing and Community Development, the DHCD, issued their final guidelines for the MBTA communities for creation of multi-unit housing under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section three A. So the revisions to the guidelines include revised community categories, significant adjustments for small and rural towns with no transit stations, which obviously Hanson does not, does not fall in that criteria, changes to the reasonable size criteria, tailored district location requirements, and a multifamily unit capacity tool. On October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, DHCD issued a revision to their final guideline revision. So in other words, they issued the final guidelines in August and then did a small revision in October to those final guidelines. And my understanding in the literature that they have on the webpage is that they don't expect any further improvements. That being said, those revisions were four of them, which modify the definition of an affordable unit to eliminate the requirement that affordable units be eligible for listing on the subsidized housing inventory, which Hanson has. Allow communities to set income limits for affordable units below eighty percent AMI. Allow a community to require that more than ten percent of the units in a project be affordable units, but not more than twenty, and create an exception to the twenty percent gap on affordable units. Back in September, I attended a webinar that provided information about these final guidelines. I also filed for a twenty-five thousand dollar technical assistance grant through the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. Recently, what that grant will do is allow us to use an outside service consultant such as O'Callaghan Planning Council to help us create regs. Recently, there was a press release that all the towns that, all the municipalities that filed for that technical grant were going to receive it. So we are technically in line for a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to help us. The first part of your packet, which says the final guidelines, it's the PowerPoint presentation that I had prepared. You can just read through it, it talks about the changes to the final guidelines. Once you read through it, if you'd like me to come in and actually do the PowerPoint presentation, I will gladly do that, and we can go over it. Some of the highlights, you know, Massachusetts has, is one of the highest housing costs, has one of the highest housing costs in the nation. Right now, we're ranked fourth in the nation for housing cost. And we're ranked fourth for two-bedroom rent, and that's based in July of two thousand twenty-two estimates. So there is, there is this need to create additional housing. So they, you know, they have changes, and I'll just touch quickly. Notable change, which was revised community categories. You know, second is the adjustments for small rural towns, again, that's not us. Third is the developable station area and how they break it down and what we're required to have for a developable area. So for instance. So for instance, Hanson's considered a commuter rail town. We have thirty-nine hundred and sixty housing units, that was as of the twenty-twenty census. So the minimum multi-unit capacity that we would have to create or have a zone that would create these units is the minimum is seven hundred and fifty units. The minimum land area required is fifty acres. So within a half-mile radius of a transit station, you have approximately five hundred acres of land. The state has determined that Hanson has approximately two hundred and eighteen available acres that, to create this zone somewhere in there. So twenty percent of that district has to be located within that two hundred and eighteen acres. They've created a toolkit, which I haven't had the opportunity as of yet to access, but that will help me in beginning to look at and put a finer point on looking at the town, looking at the two hundred and eighteen acres, looking at the area around the transit station, and start plugging in information to get us into compliance with the final regs that need to be in place by the end of two thousand twenty-four.
Now, Tony, if we wanted to be controversial and say, to hell with it, we don't, we don't want to comply with the MBTA communities thing, we don't want a bunch of housing down by the, you know, commuter rail. We don't really care what the state says, what's the downside to us? How does that impact us?
You lose the ability to apply for grants, such as Mass Works Grants. But in a webinar, Mr. Kenealy, Secretary Kenealy, made it clear that don't think that that's the only grants you won't be able to get if you don't do the housing.
So the state is going to tighten the clamps on, there was an implied?
There was, there was implied that if you, if you don't, if you don't do it, you're going to have a tough time. If you don't do it, don't. Hopefully, you have plenty of money in your coffers to deal with any issues you may have in town, in your municipality. If not, it behooves you to create the zoning. Now, again, it's creating the zoning, it's not saying that you have to go out and build the units. It's just creating an area for these units to be built. So, you know, and so again, they provide the toolkit that I'm going to be accessing. There was, to keep us in compliance, we had to file an action plan before January thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. So back in October, I actually filed the action plan, which you have, which is part of the second. You'll see a letter. So, and attached to it was the action plan, which was a form, and I filled it out with information. And the DHCD granted, they approved my action plan on November the eighth. So we're in compliance. So we're in compliance until, so it says, I'm pleased to inform you that the DHCD approved the action plan that the town of Hanson has achieved interim compliance. The interim compliance is valid until your due date for district compliance, which is twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. So we're in compliance at least till then, and we have to keep the ball rolling. As part of the action plan, there are things such as outreach, there's deadlines, that we have to start taking certain actions. And one that's pretty much the beginning of March is you start with outreach and so forth, and it's all in that action plan. As, so that's it for pretty much the MBTA regulations. I'd like to sort of just give you some additional information, let's call it a sidebar on some other things. The Governor Baker had signed Bill fifty-three seventy-four back in November, and what that's done is it's earmarked monies to the municipalities in Massachusetts. Hanson, being one of them, is in line to receive monies. And we receive, the Hanson's going to, the Library Foundation, the Public Library Foundation is going to receive forty thousand dollars. And that is for expansion, renovation, and improvements. The, Hanson's also going to receive a earmark of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. That is provided further that not less than twenty-five thousand dollars shall be expended for recreation improvements in the Mont Ponce neighborhood of Hanson. I know that there's a park down on Hancock Street that seems to be like a sad little park, and I think that twenty-five thousand dollars would be a great use to make improvements to that park.
You probably could use that as the, along with community preservation money, which also could be used for rehabilitation of a park. And for community preservation, they look for seed money from something else, because they don't want to be the only source of funding. So that might be a good project down there.
So, so we have that twenty-five thousand, I think, to be a great spot.
And only to add, is that something we would want to get Paxton Field involved in?
Definitely, definitely, yeah.
And then the other, the other one that, this is a big one, is landmark rehabilitation in the town of Hanson for a total of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And this is from the Executive Office of Economic Development. Provided further that not less than a hundred and seventy thousand dollars shall be expended to evaluate the rehabilitation and reuse of landmarks in the town of Hanson, including the former Plymouth County Hospital site, the historic Bonny House, and the construction of a boardwalk from Main Street to Burridge Pond.
Well, we certainly need it for the Bonny House.
So, you know, I know a hundred and seventy thousand dollars is three organizations, everybody's probably one are going to fight for it, but if they split it equally and play nice, you know, everybody's going to get just under fifty-seven thousand dollars toward, towards their projects. I'd also like to make the board aware of, which you might be aware, already, under the One Stop Program, last year, we did receive two grants, one for sixty thousand dollars towards the master plan, and that contract has been executed. So we'll be working with O'Callaghan Planning Council to start updating our master plan, and then a second grant for ninety thousand dollars for pedestrian improvements around the Main Street and the transit station. Also, there's what's known as the, it's a pavement program through the state. They're paying for it, and basically, they're going to come in and mill and overlay Main Street, all of Main Street from Fifty-Eight to Franklin Street. And hopefully, that'll take place this year in the spring and summer.
That would be amazing.
So that would be a big improvement just for that, and some other areas.
Is there any way you and Lisa could get together? Because I think it's important, you know, we hear about these things at meetings, and Lisa will forward us, but I'd really love to have a document that says, in two thousand twenty-two, here's the grants we got.
Sort of like an annual report?
Yeah, like an annual grant report, because you guys have been doing some amazing work, and I just don't feel like you're really getting the credit that's due for that. And I would really like to see you get the credit that's due, and I think it's the first time in quite a long time that we've had a town administrator and a town planner working together so closely, and the proof is in the pudding, because we're getting these grants, grants that we never got before. I, I'm always like, I always want to up the ante, like I want even more now, but you know.
Well, FY twenty-four, the One Stop Program has opened up again. And so there's what's called expressions of interest. If you file prior to February third, you can file five. If you file after February third, you can file two. I'll give you a guess which, how many I'm going to try and file for before February third, yes. Because I'm trying to up our ante in getting us grants. There's different programs, there's twelve different programs, which I've gone through to try and figure out what programs Hanson can try and get grants from. And then the ones that we should try for, what projects would be beneficial. I've classified eight, and out of those eight, I have to pick five. But there is one that I think would be really good that I'll just talk about very quickly. And it's a program called the Underutilized Properties Program. And the grant can be from fifty thousand to a million dollars, and there's no matching funds. And so I feel that Hanson, right now, one of probably the biggest underutilized properties is the food pantry in the Beekeeper Buildings.
Definitely.
That those buildings could, needs, could use some serious money to renovate, bring into code.
There's that front part that's not being used at all.
And, yeah, so if we could, if we could get monies for those buildings and make them, we'll call it twenty twenty-three upgrade, you know, now it gives us space to maybe do something with, with other office space for the town, such as the annex or.
Hanson's Historical Society.
Yeah, so, that's one that I'm going to be chasing, and then I have four other ones that I'm sort of picking through to say, okay, let's give it a shot, see what we can get. And I think that because the food pantry is there, that hopefully gives us a good chance of getting monies. And that's all I have for you, like I said, if, once you read through the PowerPoint, if you have any questions, you want me to come back when you have, say, a shorter agenda, I'll gladly give you the presentation.
Okay, that's awesome. Does anybody have any quick questions?
Just you had mentioned the twenty twenty-two, what you've done in the past, but also you're talking about eight things that you'd want to do, like what are your plans for coming up? Just a bulleted list, not.
Well, can you come to another meeting and talk to us about those?
Yeah, I mean, right now, in January, what I'm chasing is these.
Oh, I don't mean that one.
No, the One Stop Grants, the MBTA zoning, and tackling, which I've submitted, I've already presented to the planning board, working in conjunction with the second floor and especially the building department, making amendments to the current zoning bylaws. There's going to be some, I'm going to be bringing forward some new ones and amending some of the existing ones to get some clarification. You know, things that I saw as a designer, when I look at the zoning bylaw, I'm like, I don't even understand what that means. So let's get some clarification. So you'll be seeing that, and yeah, I'm glad if you want to come to another meeting.
Oh, definitely.
I know, I know I'll be bringing things, there'll be things that'll be coming to the board for their review, because I'm hoping with these zoning changes, I basically have, let's say, six. And I'm hoping that we can try and get them on the May town meeting.
Would love to maybe put you on sometime in February if you're.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, that would be awesome. Anybody have any other questions?
Continuously impressed.
Yeah, you've got a fan club here.
Hope I can keep it that way.
All right, well, we appreciate it, thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
All right, and now we are moving on.
I just want to make a little point of order here. There's three papers that were stuck in the, they're not, well, they're.
I think one of them's a nomination.
They're the checks, the memory, Gray Hanson.
Yeah, there are the line items, we've got, yeah, we've got them on the agenda, but they're like in a weird pack, yeah, yeah.
I just follow them.
Okay, all right, so we have got the Capital Strategic Solutions. Do we have them on the line?
They are, yes.
I, I feel bad that we tortured them by keeping them on this long, but we had a myriad of subjects to cover this evening. Okay, hi ladies, thanks for waiting. Awfully sorry to torture you this way and have you sit through some of these painful discussions. But I'm sure you're all used to it, so. So I know we met two of you, but I don't remember, I don't remember, and if I had my glasses on, it would be a lot easier to read. Is it Lynette or?
Blight.
Blight.
Blight, okay, sorry. Boy, I really slotted that. Okay, so if you guys want to, Blight, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and how you fit into the organization? And then we'll just jump right into it.
Sure, so I have been in local government my entire career as working my way up from the beginning as a budget analyst through becoming a town administrator and town manager, most recently until June, when I was in Norfolk, Massachusetts. Actually done work as a manager in Massachusetts in four different communities. And so my role at Capital Strategic Solutions is as a senior project manager. And I focus on grants, on, on grants, which sounds like you're doing a great job on for your. Sources budgeting. And on this particular project, my focus would be on your revising your website because in my last community in Norfolk, we launched a brand new website with the firm that I believe you're going to be using. So it seemed like a great fit.
Okay, well, thanks for introducing yourself and welcome to our, our world. Okay, so I think we're going to probably start, it seemed like the last time we met, you folks were going to come and meet with at least Steve Mulberg, which I know, Nicole, you've done. And, and I think you said you were going to meet with other people, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. I know we had holidays and a bunch of other stuff in between. And then I think people wanted to think about a little bit, the board wanted to think a little bit about the, the support for ARPA funds. So why don't we start with, with the commu, the social media and communications piece? And then, you know, we'll take questions and, and just kind of, you know, and I'd like to try, and I, I feel really bad saying this, but I'd like to try to put a bow on this by, say, like eight oh five or so. Does that seem doable? Okay, all right. And, and that's leaving room for people to ask questions, so.
Sure, I mean, we can, we can skip through like the first few slides of the presentation since we went over that the last time we were here. And what we can do is jump right into strengthening your internal communications and provide some examples of some of the work that we've done in other communities or that I have done as a communications person.
Fantastic.
Grab the slideshow. Is everyone seeing the slideshow? I might have to stop sharing and share again.
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, let me get to the appropriate slide. So when we were last together, we talked about building internal communications and how that transitions into going out to external communications. One of the things that I did with Pinellas County Utilities, who serves over a million customers, water customers alone, and that's, that's not even with their increase in seasons, where they have the snowbirds come down and, and things like that, is during the pandemic, we needed to build our internal communications. And we looked at trying to keep everyone connected because we were working in so many remote environments. With over five hundred employees, you can imagine that's a little bit difficult, especially where we all were remote at that point. We wanted to keep everybody connected. We also wanted to do some team building events. So we, we went through a series of division head, weekly division head meetings, talking about what each division remotely was going through, what tasks that they had underway. And we did monthly virtually, virtual meetings with the employees as a whole. Those were more generalized informational meetings with the employees. So they understood what was going on with the department, not only with the department, but the county as a whole. We would also have team building events that were usually held virtually, including Wisdom Wednesdays, Coffee Talks, and Five Minute Fridays. Wednesday, Wisdom Wednesdays provided each department to provide a tidbit of a project or a service that they were providing to residents so that they could connect with the other divisions and departments. Coffee talks were held in the morning. We would have a coffee with the division director or a department head. We would talk through their experience coming up through the ranks of Pinellas County Utilities and Pinellas County as a whole to give employees some insights on how they got to where they were in their careers. And then Five Minute Fridays were literally a five-minute, kind of like a five-minute sales pitch about an individual department or sort of that Pinellas County community would survive. One of the key things that we did to keep communities in the know of what was happening was to provide a quarterly newsletter. And that quarterly newsletter, it provided a message from the Director of Utilities, an update on what we were working on, like in, for instance, the strategic plan. It highlighted open positions as well as spotlighted employees for doing a job well done. And this went a long way to build those internal communications where we could take information from these newsletters and from these events that we were having with the employees to branch them outside of the organization and get the entire Pinellas County involved with these, with these news pieces and in the know of what was happening, especially when you're dealing with, you know, a pandemic, health situations, remote working, and situations of, you know, trying to hire, trying to hire during a pandemic was really difficult. So it allowed us to kind of get the employees involved, build them up as brand ambassadors, and go out and speak. Everyone speak the same language when it came to questions being asked of them. So I'm going to ask Blight to speak about the website support services since we talked with Steve and talked through his thoughts on where the town of Hanson wanted to go with their website. I felt like we talked internally and felt like Blight was the best fit to manage the transition with the town of Hanson. Blight, I'm going to kick it over to you.
Thanks, Nicole. Thank you for having us tonight. So I understand that you're from Steve, that your plan is to go from Civic Plus to Revise, and that's perfect in terms of my role because I took Norfolk, which had actually a different.
I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Let me see if I can get a little closer and put my, can you hear me better now?
Not particularly.
If I can get my audio up a little bit. Hold on one second.
We had no trouble hearing Nicole, did you? Yeah.
I'm a loudspeaker.
I may.
I'm used to yelling.
I, I identify with that, Nicole.
Yeah, with the screen sharing on, I can't seem to get to the, to the screen. Lets me change my volume.
I'll stop sharing, Blight, so you can adjust your volume.
There we go. Okay, I have it up all the way. How is that?
Much better, yeah, thank you.
Perfect, great. So while she's going that back on the screen, so I took a, I took our community from that platform to revise. And I can tell you, you've made a great choice there. They will do a good job of, of guiding you through, you know, what you want your website to be from what it is today. And that's built on also the work that Nicole mentioned in terms of having all of your employees come together and be able to really know what's going on. And through that, be able to reflect it in your website. Because these days, people do so much electronically. They want to be able to, to do things with you electronically. Your new website can become more of that. The first step with the company with Revise will be to decide what you, how you want your homepage to be different than it is today, if you do. And from there, you will build what's called Site Map. And remotely, they will walk you through how that works. But I can tell you from experience, it's not something that you, for you, and it takes a lot of work of your own staff or with our support to think through, how is your website laid out today? And how do you want it to be different? And having everybody understand that, work together to build the layers and make sure that when you're all done, it takes the least amount of mouse clicks for anyone coming to visit you and finding something to get there. You want to make it as seamless and as quick as possible. And so that's something where we can really help. And then usability and the user and, and user experience. There's changes you can make that will make it more, a more helpful experience for your users when they come to see you. For instance, right now, your social media is in two different locations on your homepage rather than one. And you should have every email address and every phone number highlighted so that if someone is using their phone to look something up while they're, you know, away from their computer, they can just click on it and call you. It may, when people can do those things more easily, they're more likely to follow through. And things like you have a forms if someone wants to be able to apply to be on a committee. And if they could sit there on their couch with their tablet and be able to fill out that form and send it to you without having to print it, maybe scan it or mail it, it makes them more likely to fill it out. So those are kinds of things you can do. And then aesthetics and visibility, do you like the way your site looks today? Would you want more pictures or less, less words? That's all sorts of things to think through. Jumping down to content, you need to be in compliance with the state's laws. Even everything electronic is considered a public record, so we're going to want to make sure we go through that. And with accessibility, websites, state and local websites have to be ADA compliant. And that means that someone with a disability, whether it's, they can't use a keyboard or they are, have color blindness and can't, and need a screen reader, things like that. There's ways to make sure that a website is accessible. And then finally, you do have an email subscriber list, and it is quite long, quite detailed, which was impressive. But I think if you haven't done your website in a couple of years, then you're going to want to refresh those and again, make them really interactive for people. Like someone's looking for a job, they'd like to be able to go on your, get an announcement that there's a job opening for a position and be able to, again, sitting on their couch, apply for it. That makes you more relevant and then more interested in you, and that's a good thing. So those are things to think about. And I could talk more, but I want to keep respectful of the time. And then going to the next page, this is just example, this is one of the pictures on Norfolk's new site. They decided to go with, like you, a similar, not a long scroll, screen scroll. But pictures were important, and they had a local photographer, an amateur, who was willing to give pictures to the town. And this is just one of them from their winter collection. And with that, Nicole, I'll turn it over back to you.
Thank you, Blight. Let me get this, next slide up. Being mindful of your time, we did discuss social media and developing and implementing media strategies at our last meeting with you. And what we like to do at CSS is use a layered approach so that we can reach the largest audience possible in your community and engage them with whatever's happening at, you know, your town hall or whatever, town meeting votes are coming up or just getting them actively involved in their local governance. So we use a lot of social media. We also will pitch press releases, media alerts, and news stories. We were asked to provide a couple of different examples of how we did that in the past with other communities. And I'm going to use the We Dig Downtown campaign. During the pandemic, the town of Clinton was going through a downtown revitalization project where they were using some of their, I believe it was Jefferson ninety money, for their reconstruction of their downtown. It also happened when no one was leaving their homes. Everybody was masked up and nobody was going out because of the pandemic. So add on that to the businesses that were struggling to get by. So what we did was we launched the We Dig Downtown. We went and we either telephone interviewed individuals who were uncomfortable with us going in and speaking with them, or we went in and we spoke to individuals. And we found out a little bit more about how they helped build downtown Clinton, and we celebrated that on the social media pages. Most recently, or currently, we are still working with the city of Lynn. We're helping them with their ARPA investment. Lynn invested a lot of time into their community outreach campaign. And there's several spoken languages in Lynn, including Pmai, Spanish, Portuguese. Jen, I think I'm missing, probably missing several of them, but they, they have a full-time staff of translators on hand in the city of Lynn that they just hired through their ARPA funding. But we hosted fourteen community forums and three workshops. Lynn received a total of sixteen hundred, a little over sixteen hundred and fifty survey responses on where they wanted to spend their money that the federal government was providing through the American Rescue Plan. And I think the highest numbers we saw anywhere in Massachusetts outside of the work that we've done was probably Worcester and maybe Chelsea had a pretty high amount of survey responses. But I don't think they, they touched our sixteen hun, over sixteen hundred. Did they, Jen? No, I didn't think so. We also hosted twenty-four individual project assistance sessions where we set up times for individuals to sit and work with Jennifer or myself or even Blight to complete the project request forms, and Lynn received over two hundred project submissions. I'm using this as an example for the work that we did in the community outreach. I mean, we were there, we immersed ourselves in Lynn. We were walking the community, we were talking to the residents, we're going into businesses. So it was an all hands-on-deck situation. But there's such a positive vibe around the community about this ARPA fund and the potential that it has for Lynn transitioning through post-pandemic. And it was really exciting to be, it's been really exciting to be a part of that. Although the outreach has caught, you know, kind of scaled back a little bit since they're underway with getting their projects ready to go. I think I'll always have a love for.
So Nicole, I think, at the last time that we met with you, you guys kind of, I think, sold us on your value proposition as far as what you're bringing to the table. I don't think that's the question. I think the question is, what are you proposing for us? What do you want to do for Hanson?
So we've outlined our proposal and we sent it into Lisa. We did have a subsequent conversation with your town administrator. We talked through the outreach with Lisa and what, what she looked at for a timeframe. That's, that's what it is for us, is a timeframe. We see as for the town of Hanson, the redesign of your website is important. Using social media as a tool to get your communications out. You do not have a, currently have a either Communications Information Officer or P I O. So we would act in that facet for you, getting information out, getting your community, community members engaged with, you know, a lot of the things that you have going on in town hall and getting your departments to work together to build these communications up and streamline the process in getting the information out there to the people who are ultimately, you know, casting their votes for certain projects or getting behind things or that you want to be involved in boards and committees. I do know that's a struggle, as well as getting employees in, in through your doors. I mean, every community I know thus far in this year, actually since pre-pandemic, is struggling to get employees on board. It's almost like they're fighting over them at this point.
So in your proposal, which I don't know if you've got that on the screen or, I mean, we've got it in front of us, but I just, I. You're saying strengthen internal communications, streamline internal communications, establish points of contact, establish regular meetings, develop an internal e-newsletter. And then task two, Town of Hanson website support, which I think you kind of covered earlier, you know, and Blight, you know, covered earlier. And then Town of Hanson, social media enhancement for tactical outreach. And that would be really, you know, creating unique social. Um, and that would be really, you know, creating unique social media contact to highlight the Town of Hanson department, uh, divisions and Town of Hanson employees, provide educational insights, preparing and producing updates and advisories. Um, and then developing and implementing media strategies. Um, is this a um, a sequential, um, you know, kind of process? In other words, um, would we need to do step one before we do step two? Is it a pick and choose? I mean, I obviously, I don't think we could go to task four without doing any of the other foundational pieces, nor am I suggesting that, but I'm just being like controversial, but um, you know, so, I mean, when I look at it, I kind of think, okay, task one, we definitely need to strengthen internal communications. We definitely know we need to update the, you know, do some work on the website. And we definitely know we need to do better with outreach in general, not just social media. Um, I, I'm not a hundred percent on the developing and implementing media strategies, but I feel like we've got a lot of preparatory work to do before we could even get to that, uh, but that, you know, that's just one gal's opinion. Um, I, I, what, if we were to make, you know, wave a magic wand and hire you today, how would we, what would we start with first?
We would start with your internal communication structures and working with your division and departments. That's where we would start first. We would try to get everyone on the same page, get them used to talking to us, interacting with us and telling us about the project services and initiatives that they have going on in their individual departments. Um, I think that's where, you know, I honestly, I'm a talker, I'm also a listener. I think that's one of my strongest suits is getting people talking about themselves and what their divisions and departments are doing. Um, a lot of, a lot of municipal government um, departments kind of don't do a great job at highlighting the work that they're doing. And it's an important feature, not only to have pride in your work, but also to attract and retain qualified skilled workers. It's important for those employees to feel good about their jobs. Um, because they, you know, let's, let's just face what reality is, you're competing with private sector. Right? And not a lot of people are coming into government. The other thing too is to get though, your greatest brand ambassador is your employees. They're the ones talking to your community members on day to day. If they don't have the information that they need to answer questions, sometimes you're gonna get, well, I don't know. You're gonna have to call somebody else and that's not what a resident or a stakeholder wants to hear. So we would start with your internal communications. Um, the website would start, you know, could start right alongside with that, like would commit, Bligh and I would meet with your division and department heads. Um, we would come in in person, we would do virtual meetings, we would do one-on-one meetings to get them talking and get that information flowing. Because without that information, nothing else will work.
Right, right, yeah. Um, guys, any, any questions um, so far?
Um, you mentioned you reached out to Steve Mulberg. What, what was his response?
To, to our, to the, the website plan or to the plan as a whole? Steve was excited. He um, he has a full plate. Um, I will let Lisa speak to that because I don't want you to take take what I'm saying. I'd like to, for someone from your staff to answer that question only because I felt like it was a good conversation.
So I did invite Steve, he had a prior commitment, but I did invite him to join us by Zoom, but he's very excited about having them come on board um, and work with making these improvements to our website, um, and, and getting the communication up. He really would love to do this, but he is just so basically, he is so in demand with all of the work that needs to be done. He's very excited about having them come on board and, and help us get this project up and running.
When I spoke to Steve, even before we had started talking to these guys, he knew this was work that needed to be done. He just didn't have the bandwidth to do it. So I can't imagine it'd be anything but tickle pink that somebody's gonna take this off of his plate. Um, and, and, you know, um, and like I said, he, he had done, and, and this isn't any, he didn't create this website. You know, so it's not as though he's got any kind of like feeling about, oh, you know, it's inadequate, this is a statement about me or my abilities or anything. He, he had nothing to, he inherited this website, so, um, so does that help Ed?
Yes.
Cause I know, and rightfully so, you wanted to make sure we weren't crunching Steve's toes and, you know.
Making a decision without Steve knowing we're even doing it, yeah.
Um, Mr. Hickey.
Yeah, um. Jen, um, okay, let's go with some financials. Um, I, I can see that um, there's a couple of different costs. And it looks to me, if I'm reading uh, the contract right, um, the ARPA support, uh, the ARPA grants that you would support, um, that we've already received is just under ten thousand dollars. Um, and that's, you know, pretty basic and I can understand that. But the forty-nine thousand five hundred dollar fee, um, that's a yearly fee. Am I correct?
Well, I, I don't think that's a fiscal year fee, right Nicole? So that's, that's um, you know, that would cover you for the next twelve months, so that's not gonna expire on June thirtieth.
Okay, uh, so my point being is that it's basically um, just over four thousand dollars a month. Um, for your services.
Well, that's, that's, it's not to exceed, so if we use that much.
It's not, it's a not to exceed. So we're putting a cap, like we don't wanna spend any more than.
Right, so basically we're putting a cap of four thousand dollars a month or almost fifty thousand dollars a year.
But, but that, but we're not saying, please spend fifty thousand dollars a year. We're saying, don't spend more than fifty thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
And I think that there's a, this is, there's a lot of one-time costs with this particular contract. So, so the website and the conversion and um, all the content work that you're gonna get done, all, even all the initial work um, on the communications planning, that's not, that's not something you're gonna see next year, you know, that's, that's all part of this particular contract. This is a specific contract. Um, so I don't think you're looking at an annual contract of fifty thousand dollars a year for, you know, so say a year from now, you're, you're very happy and everything is great and um, things went well. Um, but you'd like us to stay on, um, you know, on call to help with social media or help push out some communications. That would just be a simple hourly on-call contract, nowhere in the magnitude of what you're spending on this contract, cause this is an actual project and, you know, overhauling a website like that, it, it's a lot of time, Bligh can tell you, she's, she's done it.
Right, and that's what I was hoping to hear you say Jen, is because it looks like, um, you know, it's a big figure.
And it's not sustainable.
Right, but it, you know, it doesn't say that anywhere, you know, that I can read. And it just, you know, for someone just to look at this and read it, it looks like it's almost fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, and that's what I wanted you to say is that, you know, a lot of this stuff like anything else is, you know, the startup money or to get things going, get things on track. And, and I get that. What I was afraid of is that it's, you know, we signed a three-year contract and it's fifty thousand dollars a year.
No, absolutely not. You know, this is, this is a very project-specific contract.
The question is because you don't see it anywhere.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, okay, Mr. Weeks.
Yeah, um, thank you again for doing this because I know one of, one of the things I wanted to see last time was just more tangible examples of things that were, that you've been able to accomplish. That's great. I love the website designs, I love the, all the things you've been able to propose. I think it's a great idea. Um, my, my concerns were more along the lines of what Jim had just um, presented, but it, it's kind of in conjunction with, you know, the proposal and the tasks. Um, I, I'd recommend if, it might just not be jumping out at me, but um, I'm looking for really two things. You know, these are broad terms, like news announcements, program services. I saw what you did with Lynn. Um, the number of meetings that you held, are there any like quantifiable things that you're, like, I'm going to give out twelve newsletters, I'm gonna give out, you know, have X amount of meetings. So we have something to kind of fall back on and then, because that way, cause the, the last line says that, you know, the forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars um, will be uh, for one year of service with the option to be renewed. How would I know whether or not to renew it if I don't know what to compare it to based on what was promised? Um, so I wanna, if you can speak to that a little bit, like what, what do you, what do you think might, you might be able to deliver on?
Well, so can I piggyback on that a little bit because that, what I would really like to see is almost like a project plan um, of, you know, here's the deliverables that we're planning on giving you and we're, and, and, and and we know that, you know, this is not um, always definable, um, you know, to the, to the minute or the hour even. Um, but I, I'd like to see like, okay, if we say we wanna go with task one, task two, and task three, I'm just making this up. Um, and I, I'd like to know, okay, for task one, here's our project plan. And of that forty-nine thousand, we think that will roughly take again, like six thousand dollars. And, and the deliverables from that would be uh, four internal newsletters. Um, we'll have at least six regular meetings over the course of a year. Um, and yeah, whatever other things, you know, you, you think you need to do. And then task two, similar, you know, what are the, what are the deliverables? What are the, what's the project look like? Um, and, you know, what, what portion of that forty-nine thousand could we expect to be spending on that? So just a little bit more definition around that. Um, which I know was hard coming into this doing since you don't know what we wanted to do, you couldn't really quantify that. Um, so it's a bit of a dance we're doing here, like, you know, you're telling us what you can do, we're telling you what we think we'd like to do and and I think we're starting to get to, you know, coalesce a little bit. Mr. Weeks.
Yeah, and the, and the part, the second piece was, in addition to that, that didn't jump out at me. Um, is there anything here that you can put into a task, whether it be a di- a new task or one that you would add to all of these tasks that make it a little bit more sustainable for when we do the warm handoff, when your services basically have been able? And I know you said last time that basically that's, that's the goal anyways. I, I coincidentally had a capital improvement committee because I wanna give a shout out to Frank Malisi who's started to do these online fillable forms to try to make life easy for everybody. And he, he was saying yesterday, he's the chair of pretty much every committee on the planet in this town. So he's, it's either him or, or another person uh, that do that. But he was talking about how time-consuming it was, but he's trying to make it work. Uh, but it came up last night around the sustainability of that. Once that person leaves or that volunteer leaves, where does it go? Because there's only so many Steve Mulbergs to go around, there's only so many Franks that have IT experience that can do this, that are, that are trustworthy to go onto a government website and do it. Is there anything you could add to the proposal that gives us a little bit of a safety net?
Sure, we can add in some training. Um, we can add in our exit strategy to, towards the end of the proposal as a task and that will include training for your department staff. Um, as far as the website goes, that's something that we'll work with on, with Steve on so that it, it's ultimately him being your IT director, he's, that's in his wheelhouse. I would like for him to make the decision after we're gone, who's gonna take that over and how he wants to divide up those roles. It wouldn't be us determining that and then we would train those people. If that's what it requires. But as far as the other internal communications and things like that, we could definitely build in a task on how that keeps flowing after our contract's over.
Okay, cause I think we want documentation of processes and.
Well, that, I think that would be huge and then, you know, even just have, and I'm sure you're doing this anyways, but I'm just asking for the sake of saying it out loud, you know, having, putting together a newsletter template is really, really difficult. And obviously you have some that work, so if you, you know.
Yeah, I can send you one that we're working on now.
Exactly, it's stuff like that, cause I do a newsletter and it's such a pain in the butt even to do certain little things. So that's why, you know, this service is so valuable, but it's just making sure that it's foolproof enough that the next person can just plug and play and just make life easy.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, so just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, it, it, to me, it's um, you have a foundation, a solid foundation and a set of parameters that you could give layout for website and the infrastructure of communication in here. And then the other stuff comes after that, but I think that we need to focus on those two things first.
Get it done then, Doc.
Get that, get that all in, so I think that you could give us a, a solid or plan for those two things and then we can build on it from there. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, it does. It certainly does. You know, we're used to kind of breaking things out too, um. You know, I think you called it like a project plan and deliverables. We, we do that type of stuff all the time. It was a little tough with this one because we weren't exactly sure what you wanted. I know Nicole and Bligh what it meant with your department heads and that gave some clarity, but um, it is a little hard sometimes to craft the proposal when you're not a hundred percent sure what folks want. But I think, you know, the more we discuss it, we have a better sense of the deliverables that you want, so we can be more specific. Um, so we can kind of do what you said and kind of say, you know, a minimum of this many newsletters and a minimum of, you know, certain things. Um, and I think we probably could take out the renewal part, right Nicole? Cause it's not really, this isn't really an annual contract, this is kind of a project-specific contract.
No, we can remove the renewal in there. Um, as far as the newsletters go, I can tell you right now. I already have my number in my head. It'll be twelve newsletters. If we're there for twelve months, you're gonna get a newsletter every month. I don't know if that, you would need one weekly. The other updates and things can go out separately, but it would be twelve newsletters.
So we, we can certainly build in some kind of minimum metrics and, and um, deliverables into a revision for you.
And that's totally fine, but whatever it's worth, I mean, we've had plenty of people come here uh, and give us projects. We've asked, we've asked for them to come back with, with some specifics and sometimes they don't. And sometimes it's not exactly what we're looking for and I can tell you right now, I get a good feeling working with you all, cause you've delivered on coming back with specifics that I think all of us were really excited to see, so.
Thanks, thanks. Yeah, you know what, we've, we've been there, we've been in your shoes, so we, we totally get it. So that's not an issue at all.
Thank you.
And I can assure you on the website with the, with the company you've chosen for your new website, they do a great job of training. And I heard them say over and over again through our process that uh, if you can edit a Word document, you can edit the website and they'll be able to do fillable forms on their own. Um, and things like that that will make it sustainable. Um, but we'll be able to stay with them long enough to help everyone feel confident about it, so when we step away, um, they'll be able to keep it up and the communications work will help them be able to get great news out. You know, you've got wonderful things to talk about, like all the grants that you've been getting. That should be news and tell people your great story and once they're working together on it, they'll be able to do that.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, that's great. Um, okay, um, so where do we, what, what's our next step here? Mr. Hugh.
I, I just was wondering about the, what, I hate to go back, what does the forty-nine five hundred entail? That only is, is people hours. That does not include any software, infrastructure, maintenance costs and all the rest, or, or does it?
Well, I think we're using our existing website. I don't think we're.
We're using existing software?
Proposal for us to get new software of any sort or?
No, we, we don't provide any software with what, what we do. We're gonna use your existing software and then Steve is researching a new web platform. I believe that he looked into Revise is one of them and he looked into Civic Plus as well and that that determination will get made internally. No, we won't make.
Yes.
So, so what you're providing is agnostic. You don't care what we run it on as long as it's relatively new. But we're responsible for that. This is only consulting, this is not, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, we will provide the tools for, you know, the, the newsletter and, and we will provide assistance with your existing social media. We can provide um, to whomever will take over, you know, pitching the news stories to your local blogger or your local newspaper. You know, some, a set, skill set for them to do that, you know, we don't leave any. You know, my, my thing is I want people to take what we give them and grow from it. And not, not just walk away and leave someone hanging. Cause that would not be good for me or, or our company at all.
Okay, so where do we want to go from here with this?
Well, I think we need to get a groundwork, like I said, a solid.
The deliverables.
Of the first project. For me, the first two things are key.
Yep, I agree. I, I think, um, do you guys agree that task one and task two are the keys right now and then we can build on, on the rest?
Yeah, yeah, I think just something with some, with some quantifiable metrics, in whatever form that takes is fine. It's just something that we can say, that if we sign this contract next week, how are we gonna determine twelve months from now if we need to renew? If we are for good, whatever.
It's time, right now it's time and building and then hopefully we get trained enough that we don't need to have them.
No, then the training will come off.
As much, as much.
Yep.
Well, we could find out that, that they've done such, honestly, I don't wanna take all the positivity off the ta- off the table. They've done such a great job that there's a whole bunch of other stuff that we could have them do a year from now.
Well, see, my, my whole, I had had a conversation with another department head and he, he uses himself a consulting company to do um, the social media and stuff like that. And it's, it's not an un, it's not an unreasonable sum of money a month and that's what I think these guys are gonna work into.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. I just throw us a couple of, of numbers or immeasurables to it and I feel comfortable looking at that and going from there.
Um, okay. Um, so, um, all right, so I think where we're at, not to have a death by a thousand cuts type of uh, situation here is can you come back one more time with feeling um, and focus on the task one and task two, deliverables and some of the stuff that we discussed and, um, and if you wanna pass it by us. And, um, and if you want to pass it by us in advance, um, you know, send it to Lisa, and I'll take a look at it, just to make sure that we have a super productive conversation and we can get some closure.
Could I just, can I just add one, just, just for the sake of it?
Mr. Weeks just had a little thing.
I'm not even, and you may have just said this and I might just missed it, but I'm not, I'm not even necessarily in need of them coming back again. I think this is a proposal. If they just, in the contract, just send us those things, I mean, I feel like we can just kind of funnel through.
Okay, so, so I'm totally fine with that. That moves the needle further than I thought we were. So, um, is somebody wanting to make a motion? That we move forward with entering into a contract contingent upon them providing us this additional information?
Yes, I.
Mr. Hill.
This is a contract just for the part two. We're not talking the.
It's one and two.
No, one and two.
No, I mean, we're, we're not talking about this right here.
Oh, no, this is just communications we're talking about.
This is just the communications.
Communications, yep.
This is gonna be a separate discussion.
Yes, that's a different discussion, yeah. Which we actually didn't get to, and we don't have enough time to get to tonight.
So did you move that, Joe?
I moved it, I moved it all the way.
I second it.
Okay, I've lost complete control of the meeting at this point. People are moving and seconding, and I have no idea what the heck is going on. Okay, um, all right, somewhere, somebody made a motion and somebody seconded it. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, so we're gonna enter into the contract for the communications, um, contingent upon you guys getting that, us that information. So that's good news. Um, we will, however, need to have you come back to talk about the ARPA piece, because we didn't really even start to talk about that tonight.
I mean, we, we can come back if you want, but that one, I think you were kind of already set on. You just wanted us to add the not to exceed and, um, amount that we talked about. And then, um, I also added in, you talked a lot about capital improvement planning. I think the gentleman was there from your, uh, capital improvement. So I added, um, a, a bullet in there for that, if you need some assistance with that. Um, Blythe and I have all, you know, both done a lot of work with that. It does kind of tie into your ARPA, um, so we just put that.
Talk about the ARPA or no?
So I, I was reading it as we were talking. I feel comfortable enough in the, the dollar amount.
It's not to exceed.
Nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's nine thousand eight hundred.
I, I feel like, I personally, obviously I'm just one person, but I feel like we talked about that a lot. And that came from the not to exceed piece. So I feel like that, to me, I'm, I'm comfortable with as well.
Does anybody have a concern or further questions? Mr. Hill? Oh, all right, because you were being controversial down the other end today, that you weren't sure if we were talking about it. Okay, um, okay, so then I will entertain a motion to have, um, the town administrator enter into the contract with, um, Capital Strategic Solutions for the ARPA grant support for an amount not to exceed nine thousand eight hundred sixty.
So moved.
All right, second. Okay, any further discussion? All right, everybody in favor? Okay, great, anybody opposed? Okay, fantastic. Well, we just put a bow on that too. Um, okay, so that was worth the extra three minutes that it took to, to do that. Um, well, thank you, guys. We really appreciate your patience and all of your efforts. We're really looking forward to working with you. I think you're really gonna help us move the needle on things that we desperately need to move the needle on, and we all know we do. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Oh, good night.
Oh, good night.
You too. Okay, um, now, Ms. Green, we have got a, um, do we, um, Karen and, do we have something on here for the library that I'm spacing out on?
Wait, wait.
Oh, wait, okay, well, we're, okay, we're trying to whip through here. We're trying to whip through. Um, okay, um, Ms. Green, um, revised town of Hanson. Um, revised town of Hanson conservation restriction under the Community Preservation Act for sleeper conservation area from Scott McFadden of Wildlands Trust.
Yes, um, so let me, I'm sorry, I'll just pull that up. Here we go. So basically, this is a very long document, um, that, it basically says, um, and, and the purpose is part of this in section two, that this document allows for the sleeper property that the town just purchased using both grant monies and CPC funds.
Yep.
To, uh, maintain the property in perpetua- perpetuity. Uh, which means for an indefinite amount of time. And it's natural, scenic and open condition. Um, basically, and, you know, it's available for passive outdoor recreation use. So mainly, this is a long-winded document that says that that's the purpose of the sleeper property. This is the purpose that it's used for and no other purposes. Um, but as you can see, it's a long document that goes into, you know, water quality, protection, aquifer, open space corridors. So there's a lot of different, um, boilerplate language in here, you know, scenic vistas. So it basically touches on each of those, um, areas and.
Now, this is requi- a conservation restriction is required under the Community Preservation Act for any property that is acquired in part with constant, with, uh, community preservation money. So we're required to have a third party oversee and make sure that everything's monitored. And it, it's good for us to do that.
Nick, that's Wild.
Yeah, which is the Wildlands Trust now. And they've, they're, they've got a great reputation for doing a great job. They, they do this for a, a ton of properties around here. Um, will they be charging us for that? This is a bit of a loaded question, because I actually know the, the answer. They will be charging us for this.
I gather they will be.
And I believe that they're charging roughly eleven thousand dollars, which Community Preservation is going to see if, I think that's on their agenda for tomorrow night, um, to see if Community Preservation will support that. It's considered an endowment in a way. You have to make a, um, donation to Wildlands Trust, because they are, they are expending resources vis a vis their people, um, to continuously monitor all of these things. Um, and I'm sure at the point at which that goes on to the town meeting warrant, we'll be asked whether we support it or not and, you know, but this is not requiring any money of us, right?
This is not. No, this is a document that will be filed with the registry.
Okay, and so do we just, do you just need a vote from us? Do we need to sign it? Do you need both?
Yes, we, we wanna hold, we wanna vote to accept this document, and then we do need to sign it.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to accept, uh, the Conservation Commission's recommendation that the conservation, um, restriction under the Community Preservation Act for the sleeper, uh, conservation area be awarded to Mr. Scott McFadden of the Wildlands Trust.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, any further questions? Because I don't think I could repeat that again. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Um, and then you need us to sign something too, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we can circulate that while we're moving along, because we have a, we have a deadline here we're trying to meet.
Oh, yeah.
Um, okay, and then we've got accept donations to the senior center in memory of, um, Ernie Jutres. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fantastic. Um, Green Hanson to host a Bago Cornhole Tournament fundraiser at High Street Park. I love the fact that we're using that name now. That's awesome. Um, during the fall of twenty twenty-three. Um, I will entertain a motion.
Do we know what the fundraiser is?
For Green Hanson.
Oh, okay, it is for.
It's for Green Hanson, yeah.
Yeah, good, uh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Agreement between Hanson and Lakeville for Lakeville Animal Shelter, Ms. Green.
Yes, Mayor Chair, members of the board. So every, the town of Hanson does not have its own animal shelter, so to speak. So we entered into an agreement with the town of Lakeville. Um, if our animal control officer picks up an animal, he needs some way to bring it. This is an agreement that's a yearly agreement, um, that outlines the amount of the charges that have be, uh, that would be filed to the owner of the pet that is housed there. And this is just a, an agreement that ran out basically December thirty-first, and we're just looking to, uh, renew the agreement.
What happens if the owner of the pet never pays that? Do we get stuck with the bill? I'm just curious.
I, I don't think they get their animal. They, they can't, they can't retrieve their pet.
But somebody's gotta pay, Lakeville, right?
I think it's us, I think it says us.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, you know.
We've been in this, we've been in this agreement for a while?
We have. And I, I was wondering, do you, has Joe Kenny said anything about whether we've had any issues or? Yeah, I haven't heard anything, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume no news is good news on that front. Um, any other questions on that? I will entertain a motion to allow Ms. Green to enter into an agreement, um, with Lakeville, uh, for the purposes of an animal shelter.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then one day liquor places. Um, we have a wedding, um, on nine twenty-three, twenty-three. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, and we have got, uh, two open session minutes, uh, for December sixth and December thirteenth. And I would like to take a moment to thank, um, Ms. McDowell for her, um, timeliness in getting these minutes done. It's greatly appreciated, and don't think that it's not going, it's going unnoticed, because it isn't. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, and then that will bring it to Ms. Green's town administrator report.
And I'll make it quick. Um, so basically, just want to wish everybody Happy New Year, twenty twenty-three. Um, hopefully looking forward to a productive year. Um, I just want to say that the, for our accounting, interim accounting services, we did do a request for proposals. Um, the deadline was January fifth, and we did receive one proposal, which was submitted by, um, Eric Kinsher, who we appointed tonight. Um, he is recommended by many, many town administrators and managers, um, and he started today. So welcome to Eric. Um, and going on the topic of grants. So we did receive, while I was away on vacation, notification that we received the technical assistance grant for the fireworks site environmental consultant. Uh, we have been awarded an amount of twenty thousand dollars, um, of which Tracy Costa will be, uh, submitting a proposal uh, for the consulting services. Um, that was very good news. And, um, also received notification that we have received the Green Communities Grant for weatherization of the town hall in the amount of twenty thousand four sixty-one. Uh, this looks at, the Green Community, Communities looks very favorable on this, because for our next round, we will be applying for a whole, uh, heating system and cooling system for the town hall. Um, so this is step one that looks very favorable, and we'll be able to apply for this for, uh, the heating system and cooling system for the next round. Um, I've spent a lot of my days just, um, executing grant contracts, getting all the, the documentation and paperwork together and forwarding them to the, um, grant administrators for the different companies, um, agencies. Also too, um, I was able to submit two ARPA fund applications, um, to Plymouth County ARPA for the library HVAC system and the generator. Um, not an easy process, took a little bit, but got them submitted. They are in the system and review on those, it goes to, um, a number, it goes to some different, um, review processes. Could take about five weeks, but it's, at least it's in the system. Um, and also too, I'm happy to report, um, if you remember, back in the May annual town meeting of twenty-two, the town adopted the local meals tax revenue. Um, I'm happy to say that we received our first check distribution for, um, our tax revenues for that, which went into effect October first. So this is September through November, received a check for nine thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-three cents.
Nice.
Um, not bad, but we're often running on that. Um, we also, for the part-time administrative assistant to the planning board, we did post that in-house, um, under, in accordance with the contract. We received no in-house applicants. Um, it's now going outside advertising. It will be in the express next Thursday, uh, the nineteenth, and then Thursday after that. Um, and the application deadline is January thirty-first for resumes. I also received notification from General Code that they have completed the initial review, um, and of our general code, our general bylaws. So we just need to go on to the website through the portal they've provided. I can extract all of that, and then we can get the review process started. Um, and last but not least, town hall will be closed on Monday, January sixteenth, in observance of Martin Luther King Day. And that concludes my town administrator report for today.
Most excellent, thank you so much. Um, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, I will, do you want to gabble, Mr. Weeks?
No need for the gabble.
You love that gabble.
I know, you keep giving me the gabble. All right, we're jumping right in? All right, well, um, open up the Waging Personnel Board, uh, Tuesday, January tenth. That's supposed to be seven forty-five, a little bit over. Eight twenty-five, Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, open session. Um, you want to do the Pledge of Allegiance? Because it's written on this again, or do we forego that, because you've already done it?
For the sake of barbarity, um, as, as patriotic as we all are, we did already do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone's comfortable. All right, we'll jump right into new business. We have discussed library full-time custodian job description and salary range. Ms. Green, you want to walk us through that, or?
Yes, um, I can't, what I'll do is I'll provide an introduction and then I'll turn it over to, um, library directors. So currently, the library and the senior center, um, they have two different custodians that, that clean, um, the buildings. Um, what they would like to do is to combine the position to one full-time position, who will service both buildings. Um, as you know, they're connected, um, are joint twins. And what we have here is a job description for the new position. And then we're also going to look at a salary range for the new position. Um, they would like to get this out, um, advertising, and I believe they do have somebody who's interested in applying for the position.
Um, they might not be anymore.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, so that we will start advertising for that once, um, these formalities are, are ironed out.
Okay. Do you want to walk us through the job description?
Yeah, so, um, it would be, um, mostly, you know, custodial work, you know, cleaning, um, as Lucy said, but also some maintenance, um, just like sort of minor things. I know we have Charlie who, but, um, you know, who's friends with him, so, um, this person would be doing some minor repairs and stuff. Um, but yeah, basically just like cleaning. It could be like she's got the whole entire building, so library, and then she has town guardians.
Okay. Any questions from any of over here?
No.
No?
I have only a little tiny edit, the third bullet from the bottom.
That's that.
It seems like everything else is pluralized, to let you talk about locks, responds, and then it should say, I would assume, raises and lowers, instead of raise and lower.
Oh, yeah.
That's the only, that's a slight minor.
Okay, anybody else?
Um, hi Karen. I just wanted to ask, and I think I found it, um, the setup and take-down from programs. I, you know, obviously, you know I'm there a lot. Um, and we have that community room that both the library, um, and the senior center use. Um, you know, and like one of the things is chair yoga on Monday and Thursday mornings. I know you guys have it, I think Wednesday afternoons or something.
Yeah, we do have the other.
Yeah, um, so that would be part of their duties.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they'd be like setting up, I mean, if they're here, obviously they can be, you know.
Right, because I mean, with the thirty-five hours, how do you plan, and I don't think I read that, how do you plan for these hours to be?
Yeah, so Mary and I discussed, um, so we're thinking like Monday and Friday, um, to be like sometime like in the morning, sort of things like, like, starting at seven on some of the days. Um, so, you know, we open at nine, um, or noon, and the senior center opens at eight-thirty. So they'd be there at some times in the morning to, you know, set things up, or, you know, do stuff that, well, just nobody in the building, you know, public. And then, um, sometimes in the evenings, we're open Tuesday, Thursday nights, so part of that evening time. So to, you know, for programs that we have that night, or, um, and then to like, you know, vacuuming things like that when we're closed, um, on like Wednesday, for example. Um, we close at three, and the senior center closes at three-thirty, so if they're there a little bit later, they can do stuff like that.
Right, okay.
Mary and I just discussed, like, schedule.
I, one key thing that I think of, when I think of the senior center, is the snow and ice removal, et cetera. That's, that, is there overtime in, allowed in this situation?
Yeah, well, so that I, I did put in that they would, if there's a storm, depending on the timing of the storm, Yeah, well, so that I did put in that they would, if there's a storm, depending on the timing of the storm, because that's the issue we have now that, uh, you know, both the people we have, it's difficult with their schedules to be there to clean or, or the snow or ice. And we have, you know, we have staff doing things like that now. Sometimes you just, you don't have a person. So, um, you know, this person would be expected to come in at certain times, if there's a particular storm.
Bad storm, yeah.
To come in and do that.
Because the senior center opens no matter what, right? Do they, do they close?
Uh, we will, yeah, they close.
They, they will close? Okay.
They, they will close.
Okay, no, I just, I didn't know if it was like essential.
Well, no, but at some point, once we get the new HVAC and then the generator, it will become like a warming center and that type of thing. Which is going to make the, the need to make sure that everything's shoveled and accessible even more important.
And just sort of clarify my statement, like the senior center library would close only if town hall closed. You know, if we made that decision.
Okay.
There's been occasion where the library has had to close for a loss of power or something.
Sure.
With that, all the parts of town, the part-time man in the senior center is in his eighties and, you know, he really can't expect anything. He's always, everything. So, um, but thanks for Lisa, the town's been doing a much better job at clearing the snow, doing the sidewalks, so.
All right, fantastic. If, if there's no other questions.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to take this opportunity, um, and I know we're in wage and personnel, but I've gotten many, uh, compliments on the cell tower, so thank you, Lisa. Um, but as far as Karen and Mary, this is the perfect opportunity to see how two department heads work together to get something done.
And they always.
Oh, yeah, those, they're great. The two of them are great, but.
Just another example of how they are.
Exactly.
If I, I may, Mr. Chair? Uh, just want to add too, so the position is, is going to be in the, um, wage and personnel bylaw. Um, but it is going to be mirrored towards the, um, highway union contract as far as the rate. So the rate will range between twenty-two to twenty-six dollars, um, effective July one, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, that brings us to the next question. So with, uh, with the job description and the rate out there now, does anybody want to make a motion to accept both the job description and the rate as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion second. Any other discussion? Any none? All those in favor? Right, all right. And I think that is everything. Motion adjourned? So moved.
Yep.
Second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.